Good morning, welcome to the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners meeting. We honor the presence of all of our citizens who have come to share in this a public meeting and deliberations. At this time, I will ask all to please stand as this meeting is officially called to order. The invocation will be led by the Reverend Chad Perry, pastor of the River Community Church. The pledge of allegiance will be led by our own Commissioner Leibel.
Let's pray together. Father God, we thank you for your love for us and how you pursue us with that love. Lord, we can't help but pause just for a moment to remember our brothers and sisters in France and all that they've gone through during such a tragedy. We ask that you would continue to be with them as they pick up the pieces. And Father, we just, we just thank you so much for our own first responders. We thank you for how you've blessed them with such gifts and talents and abilities for them to help us in our times of need. And Lord, when we find ourselves right now at such a pivotal moment where people across the nation are speaking death to our counties and our cities, Father, we know that there is hope because you are alive and well. We know that there's hope because your people are still here in this county, in this place, and they are at work. We know that there's hope because your resources are still abundant. Father, we pray today as things come before this commission, your word declares that for those who will humble themselves and ask, you will give them great wisdom. And so, Father, since you're no respecter of persons and what you have done for one, you will do for another. Give this commission wisdom and give the people of this county wisdom as we move forward together for your glory, for your honor, for your praise. In the precious and holy name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. To those who have shared with us throughout this past year, Happy New Year. If we have not had opportunity to greet you this year, obviously, there's a lot on the minds of Putnam Countyans and we will do our level best to address and seek to alleviate those concerns. Commissioners, each of you should have received as well as reviewed the minutes from the December ninth-
Move of approval.
-fourteenth regular meeting. We have a proper motion on the floor-
Second.
-and a second concerning those minutes. Further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Thank you very kindly. Just before we move into item three with the proclamation, I would like for all first responders to please come to the very front of the auditorium. First responders, does not matter whether you are law enforcement, whether you are EMS, are volunteer professionals, please come. Uniform, non-uniform, just come there. And let's give them an applause as they come. While these men and women, these professional men and women stand before us this morning, our Governor Scott on this past week issued a proclamation statewide declaring January the fifth through the ninth as Florida First Responder Appreciation Week. Be it known in Putnam County that we appreciate these fine leaders every day, 24/7. And we are so grateful because we have so many dedicated first responders, including law enforcement officers, firefighters, EMTs, and paramedics who risk their lives day in and day out to protect all of our citizens as well as those who visit our county. On behalf of the Putnam County Board of Commissioners, I want to urge all of our citizens to recognize daily the efforts of these men and women there. We know that throughout our nation and world, there's a lot of unrest in the communities. And for some strange reason, when we read about it, we hear about it, and we see it broadcast throughout the nation and world, there are people who are copying off of negative and adverse behavior. Our county has been blessed in spite of other reports. We are blessed and we are not in an identity crisis. We know who we are and we appreciate these men and women who give of themselves because they are facing dangerous and uncertain situations and conditions every day while we sleep there up, serving us. And so, the Board of Commissioners appreciate the men and women who bravely protect and serve our county, and not only our county. When they're called out on mutual aid, they respond. So, again, Putnam County, we love you and our finest is being represented here this morning. God bless you. It's happening even as we speak. Thank you so much.
Andrew?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
At this time, as Sergeant Litzel is going toward the back of the room, I'd like for him to invite his family to join us here. It is, it is important that we recognize and realize all of our heroes, but today we do have a special recognition as well as a proclamation. If you'll just come front and center here, I will join you there. Commissioner Larry Harvey will at this time present the proclamation.
Putnam County Proclamation Number 2015-1, Recognizing Sergeant Andrew Litzel. Whereas Florida Highway Patrol troopers are exposed to personal risk on a daily basis while serving and protecting the citizens of Florida, and whereas a trooper during his tenure, tenure will encounter situations to distinguish himself through extraordinary heroic and selfish actions during the call of duty. And whereas Trooper Lawrence Andrew Litzel, a twelve-year veteran and native son of Putnam County, was wounded in the line of duty after an attempt to affect the traffic stop on December twenty-eighth, two thousand thirteen. And whereas despite the severity of his injuries, Trooper Litzel was able to subdue the suspect and maintain control of the situation until additional officers arrived on the scene. And whereas Trooper Litzel has elevated through the ranks to the position of Sergeant, and whereas Trooper Litzel exemplifies service, integrity, courtesy, professionalism, innovation, and excellence, and has received Florida Highway Patrol's Medal of Value, Valor, and the Purple Heart. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners hereby desires to honor the valor and heroism of Sergeant Lawrence Andrew Litzel and offered its congratulations on this recognition by Governor Rick Scott and the Florida Cadment as two thousand fourteen Florida Highway Patrol Trooper of the Year. Be it further proclaimed this thirteenth day of January two thousand fifteen that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners extend its best wishes to Sergeant Litzel for success in all future endeavors. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move this proclamation.
Second.
I have a proper motion and a second if this proclamation be adopted. Further discussion. Ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Thank you.
Let's all stand again and give recognition.
I just want to say, following the events of December twenty-eighth to two thousand thirteen, it was a tragedy for two families. The residents of Putnam County and outside of Putnam County came together for our family in a remarkable fashion, and it's a debt of gratitude I'll never be able to repay, but I'm truly grateful for everything that was done for us. Many of you have made trips to the hospital and sent notes and sent prayers and forever grateful. And I just can't tell you what it meant to myself and to my family, and I appreciate what you did. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
give of themselves. As we move to item four, Proclamation GFWC Crescent City Women's Club, one hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary, we're asking all to please come forward and join me at the podium. Thank you. Commissioner Harris will lead us in this proclamation.
It's my honor to read this proclamation. GFC Crescent City Women's Club, one hundred and twenty-five years of service.
Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you, Jenny. Whereas the Crescent City Village Improvement Association was organized in January of eighteen ninety for the purpose of improving and beautifying the town of Crescent City. And whereas in eighteen ninety-five, the Crescent City Village Improvement Association, together with four other women's clubs, formed the Florida Federation of Women's Clubs. And whereas within one year's time, the Village Improvement Association has been organized, incorporated, acquired land and a clubhouse, maintained a public library, made over the main streets and sidewalks, and became the center of all civic and social activities, and has continued to do so for many years. And whereas the Crescent City Village Improvement Association was used as a workplace for the war effort during World War Two, and as a school for the local school students when the school building burned down. And whereas the cultural life of Crescent City has been enriched by the educational and entertaining programs, they have been sponsored by the GFWC Crescent City Women's Club. And whereas the GFWC Crescent City Women's Club is celebrating one hundred and twenty-five years of service to their country and their community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Putnam County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes the GFWC Crescent City Women's Club and its contributions to the community, and congratulate the members on its hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary in Putnam County. Mr. Chairman, my mother and I have been members of the Crescent City Women's Club, I am proud to say, for many years, and I celebrate with them, and I'm very proud of all that they do, and these ladies are the real workers in the community. I make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Mr. Chairman, we have a proper motion on the floor.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. During the hour of this session, congratulations. We would like to hear from the president as well.
Mr. Chairman, I think they might have an announcement for this Saturday. If you would like to share that with the group, that would be great.
Yes, I just want to say thank you to the commission. Over the years, I know you have been very helpful in making some of it, oops, sorry, I need to talk here. I wanted to thank the commission because I know over the years, there have been many instances where they have been helpful in getting us, helping us be able to accomplish the things that we do, and one of them is our Little Blue House Museum that we, that
Glisten. Commissioner Pelisir, if you will present.
we took on as a project.
Yes.
We have the, we've given you guys invitations to our celebration.
Representatives that are here, please come forward, our library director and board
It's Saturday from ten to three.
members.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It's an open house with our clubhouse, the Little Blue House Museum, and the library, which was our project from the eighteen nineties when the club was first started, and until it was turned over to the county.
Thank you so much.
And so, they are part of our celebration also. And we're going to have some different activities throughout the day. We're going to have lots of refreshments and a lot of fellowships, so we hope you come and help us celebrate.
Putnam County Proclamation Number twenty fifteen dash two, One Book, One Putnam, The
Thank you again.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Glisten. Whereas reading is an important activity for all the residents of Putnam County, and whereas less than half of the adult population now reads literature, the Board of County Commissioners wishes to encourage all the county's residents, both young and old, to read. And whereas reading is one way to create bonds within a family and among friends and neighbors, we want to get everyone in the community, from high school kids and office workers to public officials and senior citizens, to read and discuss a great book together. And whereas One Book, One Putnam is encouraging all residents to read J.T. Glisten's The Creek, a reminiscence of the life of Cross Creek area during the time of Marjorie Kinning Rawlings. And whereas the program aims to revive reading, therefore, in support of this goal, there will be book discussions, art contests, and parties. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners knows the residents of Putnam County will benefit and learn from reading this book. And whereas One Book, One Putnam is celebrating eleven years of encouraging reading throughout the county, now therefore be it proclaimed that the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners hereby supports Learn Through Reading as promoted by One Book, One Putnam and proclaims January and February two thousand fifteen as One Book, One Putnam Reading Season. Congratulates One Book, One Putnam on its eleven years of promoting reading and discussion. Done, ordered, and adopted this thirteenth day of January two thousand fifteen, Board of County Commissioners. Mr. Chairman, I so move the approval of this proclamation.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. During the hour of this session, congratulations. Thank you. Let's make us all better. Share some remorse.
Thank you so very much. This is probably one of the most important things that goes, or at least we believe, goes on in Putnam County, because it encourages folks to read, it encourages families to get together, it encourages conversations in the weirdest and strangest places. Maybe Publix isn't the weirdest and strangest place, but I've had conversations about the book in Publix. Wherever I go, somebody says, hey, what's about that book? And it's through the support of the Board of County Commissioners who makes it possible for me and my staff to promote and support this program, and we really do appreciate it. This year, we have five book discussions scheduled, one in each location of the library system. And Mr. Leibel, I haven't gotten in touch with you yet, but you're on my calendar and on my list if you can make it to the Bostwick Library. We'd love that.
You better believe it. I look forward to it every year.
And Mr. Harvey, if you'd love to come to Interlochen, we'd love to have that happen. And Mr. Pelisir, and Mr. Flag, and Ms. Harris, we'll find places for you too if you'd like to join us as well, because you are all an important part of this process, because it's important for the community to see their leaders reading as well. And we've got an art contest this year, and it's going to be crowd judged. It will be at the finale. If you feel an artistic vein, create something in the spirit of the creek, bring it to the finale, and who knows, maybe you'll win. That would be great. But it's just such an awesome event. It does reach out all over the county, and we just do really, really appreciate all that you do to make reading in Putnam County important, and for that, we thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your leadership. As we move forward into this particular part of our agenda, this is, this is public comment. We as your elected legislators locally in Putnam County, we're always willing and ready to listen to our citizens. We just ask all of our citizens to recognize and realize that this is an opportunity to bring things to our attention that we may not be aware of, but please give us the benefit of understanding that we cannot reasonably make a decision on what you bring to us that we had no prior knowledge of, and it's difficult for us to engage in debate there because, you know, we're here to deliberate on decisions that we've had opportunity and time to study. There are public comment cards that are conveniently located at the meeting room entrance there, and we ask that those who, again, choose to speak, submit those cards to the clerk that is seated before us so that we can maintain order and keep our meetings as efficient, because your time is just as important to us. On the hearts of many who have gathered is a lot of things over this past weekend, and we will do our very best to hear the concerns from your perspective. We are going to also honor the three-minute rule, and that will go for all that are speaking, doing, public comment. First and foremost, I do want to recognize the presence of our state representative, the Honorable Charles Van Zant, who is here representing us in the Florida House of Representatives. He is going to speak to us, and I acknowledge the presence of Palatka's mayor, Mr. Terrill Hill, the Honorable Terrill Hill, and also City Commissioner Justin Campbell. Thank you all for sharing with us this morning. Good morning, Your Honor.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Vice Mayor, Mayor Lawson Brown is, amen. Could not see her. Amen. That's you.
You need a booster seat, Ms. Brown.
Thank you so very much.
You need to stand up.
City Manager Mike Simbor, we could actually, if we had advertised, could have a joint meeting this morning. Thank you.
City Manager Patrick Kennedy also. He's there.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you so much. Keep me checked.
Thank you, Chairman Flag. We could have had roll call, I suppose, had we known.
Absolutely.
I come to you this morning as a native of Jacksonville, Florida, very regrettably appearing before you, having the honor to represent you in the state legislature. I read all of the excerpts in the paper, and I'm amazed that the Jacksonville Chamber Commerce, the president of whom is a friend of mine, Daniel Davis, and we served in the legislature together, Mayor Alvin Brown, who I've met and believe to be a Christian man who would be thoughtful of others' needs and of their assets before any alliance would be made, and of the riverkeepers who I support in the Florida Legislature. Had a meeting with them last year in the Senate, believe in what they're doing. So, saying that, I would say that with a great deference, because I intend to meet with each of them, either individually or collectively, because I believe they simply do not understand what a damage this alliance that allegedly has been made will do to Putnam County, and not only Putnam County, but also to our neighbors in Marion County. If you empty Rodman Reservoir, you have then lowered the water table for the surrounding area, big time. There's a con of influence that's going to take place, and people's wells will go dry, and many other people that depend on the water table, which has been low for more than twenty years because of our drought and is just now recovering, will be damaged greatly. In addition to that, our springs, including Silver Springs, which is the headwaters of the Akawaha, Alexander Springs, Juniper Springs, many of our springs in that con of influence are going to also be lowered. Our springs in Florida, especially in North Florida, are right now fighting for their lives. Many of those springs supply needed water to the St. Johns. The idea of lowering Rodman Reservoir in order to cleanse the St. Johns because they're going to do dredging is absolutely ludicrous. All of that water, it's true, will wash out some of the mud made by the dredging, and then all of that will go into the Atlantic Ocean. We will have nothing, and they will have no more benefit. The St. John's River depends upon the cleansed water feeding into it from the other tributaries and our springs that surround it. We depend on our springs. Economic development depends on people coming to see our springs, and the people who just live here day to day, those who work, those who've not been able yet to find a job, all depend on the water table maintaining its level and coming back. It's not as full as it should be already. In addition to that, the lakes in Putnam County, among others, have suffered greatly over the last two decades, and for us to just lower them, for what? Just so that we can make some sort of an alliance to dredge out the river? We can dredge out the river without damaging our environment, without damaging people's lives, without damaging the opportunity that we may have in Putnam County to recover economically in the future. Recently, in Florida Trend and in other places, it pointed out that Palatka, the county seat of Putnam County and Putnam County, was the only dying entity among all of the cities in Florida. It pointed out, we're drying up. So then, why would you damage your neighbor who cannot yet stand with the other neighbors? So you're more powerful, so you would damage the small neighbor? I'm reminded of the story in the scripture where the prophet came to David and said, you know, I know this king who took the only little lamb his neighbor had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative.
I'll answer any questions anybody might have. I happen to be knowledgeable about this.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I think it's crucial for all to, all concerned to know that we will not be a reactionary group, but we will be responsive.
That's right.
And we will hold all accountable there as we sit here. It is my understanding that the alliance is adding congresspersons and things of that nature to this equation. How can you go into someone's locked house without benefit of key and be legal? You know, how do you encroach upon the life and the livelihood? It is crucial that all know that economics cannot stand alone. We have economics, we have environmental, we have ecological issues that are all in this together, and we as leaders of this county will not sit back and watch things happen. We will not wonder what will happen.
I'm reminded of the story in the scripture where the prophet came to David and said, you know, I know this king who took the only little lamb his neighbor had. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative.
I'll answer any questions anybody might have. I happen to be knowledgeable about this.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I think it's crucial for all concern to know that we will not be a reactionary group, but we will be responsive.
That's right.
And we will hold all accountable there as we sit here. It is my understanding that the alliance is adding congresspersons and things of that nature to this equation. How can you go into someone's locked house without benefit of key and be legal? You know, how do you encroach upon the life and the livelihood? It is crucial that all know that economics cannot stand alone. We have economics, we have environmental, we have ecological issues that are all in this together, and we, as leaders of this county, will not sit back and watch things happen. We will not wonder what will happen. We will be a part of making something happen, and it's going to be the right thing for the benefit of the Putnam Countyans. Commissioner Leibel.
Yes. Thank you, Representative Van Zant, for being with us this morning, and we look forward to your leadership and guidance as this subject approaches the legislature this session. We will very much be leaning on you. We've just started our coordinating effort, Save Rodman Reservoir Group, has got a legal fund existing now that will be added to, and we are arming up for this battle once again. You well put, saving Rodman Reservoir again. And thank you again for being here. We're at your service.
Well, I'm at your service. It's my honor to serve. This will be a fight. I believe that all of you, as individual commissioners, need to write a letter to the DEP and to the St. John's River Water Management District. Send them separately to every board member, to primary staff members, and we need to write letters to those who have made this alliance. We need to call upon Mayor Alvin Brown. We need to call upon Daniel Davis. We need to call upon the River Keeper. We need to call upon these people who believe, I guess, in good faith, that they have done something that will be of benefit economically to their district, but I'm reminded of the Hippocratic Oath, which says, first, do no harm. This will do great harm to our community. And Commissioner, we cannot stand idly by and let this happen to our people. We're sent to represent them and to fend off any damage that will be done to them in their behalf.
Mr. Daniel Davis from the Jack's Chamber called our office on yesterday, apologized for, I guess, what we read, and unfortunately, I asked the question, what is the definition of region? How on God's green acres can you have a regional meeting and leave out Putnam County, which is the home of Rodman Dam and the Akawaha? He assured me that he would be here this morning, had he not had an out-of-town conflict, and has requested that he be placed on our agenda to come and address concerns. And just as I indicated to him, you all have formed a pact. You have a coalition. You have a group there, and I'm not so sure that you can speak for the group, but I do also understand that Putnam County is not the stepchild of this region, and we're not going to just sit back and let things happen, and we're not going to find out things that directly affect who we are through the media. That is absolutely unacceptable, and we're just not going out like that, period.
Well, let me say this. I know Daniel Davis as a man of honor. He's always been a man of integrity, and as I mentioned in the beginning, I lean toward deference until I can meet with these people who are involved. I have not been able to. Actually, the first I learned of this was from Chairman Flag calling me at my home during supper last night. I hadn't seen the paper on Sunday. As you know, I pastor church, and I just, I've been over my head getting bills filed and ready to go back to the legislature, so this was nowhere on my radar until you called me, which I appreciate, Commissioner.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Commissioner Leibel.
I just wanted to bring out two points, that we're going to be absent of a senator in this district through this session, so even more reason that we really need to team up. Also, congressional, part of the Congressional delegation for Northeast Florida, Andrew Crenshaw and Congresswoman Brown announced this morning their support for this project also, getting behind the Jacksonville Chamber. So our work is going to be cut out for us. It really is. And in the community, we're just going to have to really hunker down.
Yeah. Well, the community will need to show up, and those of us who are in leadership will need to show up, and we don't know where to show up yet, if they don't tell us when they're having a meeting.
Yeah.
And so I hope that from this meeting this morning, they will understand that we expect to be at their meetings, but we need to know when the meetings are, and we expect to be heard at their meetings, because we do have input.
Well, not only that, don't invite me as a guest to my own house.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, I'm at the table, you know, and it's not, it's no joke about it.
That's right.
You can estimate the cost of dredging. You can estimate the cost of breaching, but you cannot estimate the cost of the economic adversity that you're creating in Putnam County. Absolutely not. And my response is, really? Commissioner Harvey.
Rodman Reservoir, in our estimate, costs about somewhere between $200,000 and $300,000 a year to maintain. It brings in between $10 and $14 million a year to Putnam and Marion County.
Absolutely. Commissioner Harvey.
That's a good return.
Representative Van Zant, thank you for all you do for Putnam County. I am president of Save Rodman this year.
Good.
Commissioner Leibel passed the reins over to me, who he got them from Mr. Ed Taylor, my predecessor. So I am getting trial by fire here, and I don't mind that. It's a wonderful thing. It gives us an opportunity to show off what Rodman Reservoir really is. You already mentioned, you know, how big the pool was. Lake Akawaha is over 9,000 acres, 21 billion gallons of fresh water sitting out there. And not only that, 700 million gallons flow across that dam every day to cleanse the St. John's River.
That's right.
And I believe, and just my personal feelings right now, when I read the article yesterday afternoon, was that this gives such a black eye to mitigation. It just, it's a terrible, it almost sounds like extortion, and I hate to use that word. But if the port is that important, mitigate up in Duval County. But we are, we own this house. We're not guests here. And that's what I think maybe we need to look at when we talk about mitigation, is if there's something important you want to do, then mitigate in your own area, but don't be coming down here to any other area and do that. We wouldn't go up there and do that to them.
No.
And I think that's the message we need to send out.
Are you saying that we should not gather alliance together and sell the Fullerton Bridge or the Matthews Bridge or something?
Exactly, sir.
Let's do something larger, like Disney. Just put it soft.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Harris.
Representative Van Zant, you know, it's easy to sit back and say, I support Rodman or I support this, when things are going fine. But when people are lining up on the other side, it's harder to stand up and say how you feel, especially when it's a large group. And I want to thank you personally for coming and standing up for us, and we're going to lean on you, and we appreciate you. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Commissioner Pelissero.
I'll be brief, and I'm going to echo exactly what my colleagues have said. We do appreciate your help in this issue, and it is very important to Putnam and Marion Counties, but most important to us. And the resounding chant that I'm going to go with is, when did we become a pawn in Duval County's game of chess?
I can't answer that.
Well, they're going to have to answer it. And that's going to be my chant, is when did we become a toy in their game to put us up as something to throw away? As Commissioner Flag says, don't invite me to my own house.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Alex McCoy, please come.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
President Dana, please come. President Jones, welcome.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners Tim, John, Russ, Rick. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. I do have some guests with me. My name is Dana Jones, Putnam County Chamber of Commerce. With me, I have my Vice President, Economic Development, Alex McCoy, and Chris Quinn, the Vice President for Government Affairs from the Jacksonville Regional Chamber. I too was as disappointed as y'all reading the paper. That was also my first notification. I will restate the Putnam County's position, even though y'all know it well. We are also in this fight with you and have been for 25 years. We have to retain Rodman. It contributes millions and millions of dollars into our local economy, and also equally important, it is consistently one of the top bass fisheries in the state of Florida, and also one of the top lakes in the United States, making the Bassmaster list. That's one of the main reasons why we actually can attract the national attention and the groups that we get on top of that, that bring additional help to our economy in Putnam County. That being said, we're here at your pleasure, and if you have specific questions or you need more comments, we're here.
Were there any statements from the liaison from regional?
Thank you. Chris Quinn with the Jacksonville Chamber. As I know Daniel Davis called you last night, and we felt we needed to have someone here to first of all say, we're extremely apologetic for the severe breakdown in communication on that no way, shape, or form should, you have read that in the paper or gotten phone calls about that. You should have been part of the discussion. We should have talked to you. We have a very good relationship also with the Putnam County Chamber of Commerce, and they also should have been talked to. So I'm here to say, on behalf of the chamber, we're extremely apologetic for that. As you mentioned before, Daniel would have been here but for a prior engagement, and he will be back later this week and fully intends to come down to meet with everyone individually, meet with those who have questions for him, and to come before this body and make a presentation, to give everyone ample opportunity to ask the questions that need to be asked, and just have that dialogue that should have been had prior to. So again, I wanted to offer my apologies on behalf of the chamber.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Harris.
I do have a question I'd like to ask. Did this issue come before the chamber, before the Executive Board or the body, and did you all vote on this, that you were supporting this action?
No, this didn't come before the Chamber of Board of Directors, no.
Thank you.
So, Chairman, if I could, so it was a committee, ad hoc committee. How would you describe the group in the backdoor way? I can't think of another word to discuss, I mean, how they met. If you could just elaborate on that a little bit.
Sure. You had four...
Use your microphone a little closer, if you could.
Sorry. You had four... Sure. You had essentially four entities. You had the City of Jacksonville, the Port Authority, the St. John's River Keeper, and the chamber, and the discussions really were with the senior leadership amongst those organizations.
Were there minutes taken?
I think they were informal, informal meetings.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Quinn. I do appreciate you being here in our past endeavors, and I hope we can clean this up.
Thank you so much for your courage to come, and thank you for hearing us today. I think that all of us have said things and we have done things. My issue is this, they, whomever "they" is, are moving forward while we're sitting. I am not tickled. I am not tickled at all, because no one will take advantage of this county. We don't roll like that, and to all concerned, we're not going to engage in warfare through the media. We are thinkers in this community, and we will sit to the table. We qualify to sit to the table, and we expect to give respect and likewise receive it.
Yes, sir.
So you can take that wherever it needs to be delivered, and we will gather together at the appropriate time.
Yes, sir.
But thank you again, sir. All righty. Okay. Mr. McCoy, do you have anything, sir?
No, sir. I have nothing to add. Thank you.
Thank you so much again for your leadership, and again, thank you for your response, sir, and we will look forward to whatever our next step is. Thank you. Any other discussion on the Rodman issue? This is not an agenda item, but it was an item that needed our immediate response and attention. Yes, sir, please come forward. Please state your name and address for the record.
I am Joseph Nickel. I live in Crescent City, outside, actually down at Georgetown, just off of Lake George.
Yes, sir.
I'm the tournament director for the Florida Bass Federation, state organization. I have some, a few comments. I'm also a professional guide. I guide for, one of the reasons they say the Barge Canal was stopped was the railroads, but I do guide for both of the railroads here, Norfolk and CSX. Those guide trips are, a lot of them go on to Rodman. These individuals that come here, I have guided for people from California, Washington, Texas, almost every state in the Union, come here to Putnam County, and they spend money while they're here, plus pay us, which we buy fuel. There's 37, I believe, guides altogether, and we'll guide three or four days a week with different individuals from all over. Just that alone is, I think, brings a lot of money into Putnam County, and some of these guide trips are specific. They want to go to Rodman. I have guided for individuals from Canada. They came here because they said, I understand you can, you're a good guide, and we want to go to Rodman. Well, not necessarily so, but we had a good day out there anyway, and we have several other trips scheduled now for their friends to come here to fish Rodman. One of the things that I'm understanding about the dredging that will bring salt into, more salt into the river, well, the river's already salty. I've caught flounder out of Lake George. The other thing is, is this river flows north. That means it flows into the Atlantic, pushing that salt back out again. That's not, to me, is not a very good reason for them to want to drain Rodman. The other thing, and this is, and I'll be honest with you, this is rumor, that one of the supporters of this is a lot of the canoeers. So they can canoe all the way from the head of the Akawaha all the way down into the river, and right now, they can't do that, because they don't want to go through the locks. To me, again, like I said, that is rumor, but it may be an issue that comes up, and there may be a group that is supporting this that we don't know about. It's been there 47 years. There's eagles, there's bear, foxes, fish, all kinds of fish, otters, the osprey have nested all along there. If that water goes away, I want to know what's going to happen to that wildlife. It's not going to be able to sustain itself in a narrow river. That's what the Akawaha would become. It just doesn't make any sense to me that we're going to hurt our economy. The number of tournaments that are held in Putnam County, there's tournaments here every weekend, and when those locks are operating, there are people going into Rodman. They're spending gas here, they're buying food here, they're staying in our motels. If Rodman goes down, this economy in Putnam County is going to be hurt by it. I cannot understand how an organization that doesn't live here in this county can do something that it will impact this county that much.
Anyone can propose, but we've got to be between proposal and implementation, and that's where we stand.
I certainly appreciate, well, Mr. Harvey, I know, all right, and the rest of you that are supporting the Save Rodman. We need Rodman to stay here, if not just for us. Look at the wildlife that is sustained there, the eagles. You can go out there every day, and there's an eagle flying over.
Thank you again for your comments, and we are asking our community to not wait for the media version of any of these issues. Let's join forces together. It's very heartwarming for the City of Palatka to be strongly represented here today, Crescent City, Interlaken, Willaka, all of our municipalities. We will stand as one. So thank you again for your comments.
I have one real more point that I need to make, and I'll leave. When they breach that dam, there's a tremendous amount of silt that is going to come into a river that flows north towards where... that is going to come into a river that flows north towards where they're dredging. Oh, my goodness. Are we going to refill a hole? Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir. We will move forward in our public comments and again, thank each of you. There are many others who I'm sure who have commentary. We will not let this issue slide. I am going to close off additional discussion on Rodman at this time because we will have an appropriate time that it is properly agendated and announced that we will be discussing. This is not a new issue and it's just being resurrected and we're being blindsided unnecessarily. So but thank you again for your support. Dr. Eric Jump, you are the next public speaker. Dr. Jump, please come forward, 126 Timber Lane, Palatka, Florida. Welcome and thank you for your patience.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity here to speak up for children. Picture for a moment your children and your grandchildren and the ways in which they make you smile. It's infectious. You can't help but smile. Now we have picture number two. Children who open their mouths with brown, rotten, and broken teeth. This picture is not a pretty picture. Community water fluoridation is a proven and safe, effective means to prevent dental cavities and in addition, reduce healthcare costs. The CDC has recognized water fluoridation as one of the ten great public achievements of the twentieth century. Community water fluoridation has brought our country forward in better enjoying our lives and stimulating our economy. As you know, our Palatka City Commission voted in March of 2011 to rescind Palatka Ordinance Number sixty-two dash six, thus ending many years of community water fluoridation. No physician or dentist was consulted. Their decision was not based on credible science, which overwhelmingly supports community water fluoridation as safe and effective. Instead, it was based on misinformation. Instead of relying on the recommendations of the CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, American Dental Association, and the World Health Organization, that commission ignored these groups and relied on misinformation and their own opinions. As a pediatrician in this community for nearly thirty years now, I'm here to report that we are faced with an urgent public health crisis of increasing numbers and severity of dental cavities. Dental cavities are in an infectious disease process across all socioeconomic groups, but it is the poor and the young who are hit the hardest. I and local dentists have seen a dramatic increase in serious cavities requiring hospitalization and surgery due to extension of the dental infection, which has spread into the head and neck. To see child after child with rotten teeth and pain with anguished parents is disheartening. I am here as your children and grandchildren's pediatrician to respectfully ask you to add to your agenda for your next meeting on January twenty-seven, a panel of dentists, physicians, and public health folks to present a clear picture of community water fluoridation and to answer all concerns and all questions. We are at your service to aid you in your task and your mandate of public health oversight. And remember the first picture, infectious smiles, not infected teeth. Thank you.
Dr. Jump, thank you so very much for your presentation. It's duly noted that we will place on our agenda an opportunity to come. We likewise would like to invite those who are operating water systems throughout the county so that it will be firsthand information, which includes the City of Palatka and the various other municipalities and water systems there. So thank you and we look forward to seeing you in two weeks.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Ms. Janet Smith. Good morning.
Good morning.
Sixty Carefree Drive.
Wilaka.
Wilaka, Florida. Thank you.
That's true. My husband and I are volunteers for a civic organization and we were working in South Florida this weekend. And as we traveled along I-95, I had an absolutely breathtaking experience. Breathtaking in just that sense. I passed a huge trash mountain. I could not ignore this. I could see from miles away all of these birds that were coming down and I could smell it and I could see it and it is so unsightly. And once again, I have to bring this forward because you must remember that the people who have been coming to meeting after meeting after meeting comprise a huge diversity of groups. Everybody from environmentalists to fiscal conservatives. When do you often see that? Not only do we have an opportunity to solve a problem here, but this is an opportunity to unite the people of Putnam County. How often do you see those groups agree on anything? Come on, really? And it just breaks my heart to think about putting trash mountains in Putnam County. You're concerned about bringing in tourism and your economics. How in the world is a trash mountain going to bring that goal forward? I don't think so. There are other methods. And when you build a monument like that, your name is on that forever. Not only now, but the future generations. I cannot conceive of that being the highest object in our county. One of the blessings we have is having a beautiful rural county. We cannot ruin it with trash mountain. Landfill is not the answer. The people have said so and you must listen. There are solutions. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Smith, Mr. Earl Ballingie, 496 Clifton Road, Crescent City.
Good morning.
Morning.
After the Rodman issue, this is very minor, but I'm not going to waste a good blue card. I'm here this morning to ask you all to consider banning pow alcohol. Pow alcohol is nothing more than powdered alcohol. There's a company out in Arizona, Lipsmark, who's marketing this. It comes in a little sealed packet, four inches by six inches. You pour this powder into a half a glass of water and you have the equivalent of one ounce of alcohol. It comes in vodka flavor, rum flavor, and mixed drink flavors. We have an underage drinking problem here, as does every state in the Union. This will do nothing but help it. So far, the states of Louisiana, Michigan, Minnesota, New Jersey, New York, Ohio, South Carolina, and Vermont have banned this item, this product. Now, South Carolina only banned it for a year. They're bringing it back this year to make a permanent ban. This coming year, Colorado, Nebraska, and Utah are going to bring it up for their legislatures to ban it. This product is not governed by the FDA. It's alcohol. So the tobacco and alcohol tax people, Treasury Department, control it. They've released it once and they had to pull it back because of wording on the little packet. They've got it reworded and it's getting ready to come out again. I don't know if Florida's going to ban it or not, but y'all can ban it here in Putnam County. I think it will help us, not maybe the young people, but help us in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ballingie. We will make proper note of that and we will also pass that information on to our state representative. Mr. Merle Sparkman, 105 Flamengo Boulevard, Interlaken. I did not realize that your questions and comments, rather, were on the Rodman. I would have called you earlier, but it's fine.
I come here to apologize. Everything that I was going to say has already been said, so I wish to excuse myself.
So your single word is amen?
Amen.
All right. Thank you so very much, Mr. Sparkman. Ms. Elizabeth Bacon Smith, 203 Morrison Road, Interlaken, Florida. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. This will go faster. I think I can cover two topics in my three minutes if I simply read regarding both. This note is to Tim Smith. This is to thank you for your personal wisdom and political courage in your decision to continue performing marriage ceremonies for everyone despite sexual orientation of the couples obtaining their marriage licenses. Secondly, for making me personally welcome right down to the coffee and donuts to show support for and witness history being made in Putnam County. Our position in Putnam is uniquely so as opposed to some of our surrounding counties at the moment. Yet you stood ready, even to the extent of being prepared to cross-train other county employees if necessary to continue and offer services to all Putnam County residents. Yet cross-training wasn't necessary as not a single one of your people backed off. I witnessed everyone's openness and welcoming and active assistance. You and your staff make me proud to live here. Thank you for representing all citizens of Putnam County. Sincerely, Elizabeth Bacon Smith. And the other is I would like to call everyone's attention to the Gainesville Sun front page of Sunday's edition, January eleventh, two thousand fifteen, where it says, "Your reusable trash is now the county's treasure." And I can get by with reading just a couple of the subheads on this. "County running recycling without a middleman could bring in extra $500,000." Under the photo, it says, "Workers separate recycled materials at the Levita Brown Environmental Park on January seventh." "The county is very focused on recycling, on increasing recycling. It makes sense for us to run this operation." And that's Sally Palmi, Letchwood County's Assistant Public Works Director. And a single paragraph here says, "County officials believe that although they are assuming the cost of employees and losing some $200,000 in lease money and fees SP recycling used to pay, they will make the $500,000 in profits through sales to recyclers." So I want to encourage all of you again to be very open and consult with other counties right next to us as to how they are resolving their issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bacon Smith, and we agree with you that we have Florida's finest clerk of court. And we are paying attention not only to our neighbors that are contiguous to Putnam County, but we are looking even beyond the state lines and we are looking for best practices throughout our nation as it relates to our concerns and the prioritization of recycling in our community as one component of how we deal with the municipal solid waste. And so thank you again for your observation. Dr. Neil Letts, 100 Little Orange Lake Drive, Hawthorne, Florida, 160.
Good morning.
Good morning to you, sir.
My topic is municipal solid waste management options. Modern MSW option management has two goals. One, to reduce volume eighty percent or so and to control toxins. Increased landfilling is not an option as it produces permanent putrid poison piles. Three options remain, including export by rail, incineration, or plasma cooking. Export by rail requires only two to three 100-ton rail gondola cars with a spur side ramp, allowing direct dumping of waste from trucks and trailers into the cars. Rail spurs are present in this county at little or no cost. This could be a permanent solution. CSX already does this and has a manager that can arrange this for us. We to decide to import trash, this would solve the benzene problem as tires, plastic, and wood are the fuel or needed in 1,000-plus-ton daily input in order to make the processes possible. I apologize for not looking at you while I'm reading this.
You may continue, sir.
Incineration produces electricity, fuel, and also high enough temperatures to melt this... And plasma electricity, I'm sorry. Incineration produces electricity and plasma electricity, fuel, and also high enough temperatures to melt the sand, dirt in the process into slag glass that when cooled quickly dissolves the mercury, arsenic, and heavy metals, therein permanently removing these toxins from the environment. Slag glass is not crystalline and amorphous, so it soaks up all the stuff. The first incinerator in the United States was built in eighteen eighty-five in New York to overcome their waste volume problem and reduce it to twenty percent. Modern incinerators must have moving grates that expose the tire, plastic, wood, paper, fuel to sufficient oxygen and heat to reach ignition temperatures. Plasma arc technology uses self-generated electricity from syngas to create 2,100-degree melting temperatures to cook the mixture by 20,000-volt temperatures to totally disassociate atoms and to create the amorphous glass that is not possible. Burning in coal-fired and seminole and incinerators do not raise the glass, the sand temperatures to a high enough level, which is, they only reach about 1,800 degrees where you need 2,100 to create the glass. Incineration and plasma processes are not magic but rely on economy of quantity fuel input to make the processes economically viable and 1,000 tons a day appear, or more, probably more is better, appears to be the threshold. Plasma pilot plants must be built to handle this quality or are not viable. We don't, that's not right. Plasma plants must be built to handle this quantity or not viable. Hauling thousands of tons of trash daily from counties by truck is one-third as efficient as rail traffic. Steel wheels on level steel track versus multiples of trucks and rubber tires tearing up our roads. It also avoids the political process relying on adjacent counties only supplying the necessary tires, plastic, wood, paper to make the procedures self-sustaining. Our options are export by rail, incineration, plasma, and possibly or probably somehow in this process, recycling will be part of the options. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lett, for your synopsis of management options. It duly noted. At this time, I'm going to close the public comment section, all of the cards that have been submitted unless there's someone who choose not to submit a card that would like to speak. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
John Spells, 106 Citrus Lane. I'm just wondering when are we going to start trying to get some of these roads throughout the county repaved, resurfaced or something because I noticed on West River Road, which y'all keep speaking of, but I noticed it was out there last week just patching holes. But you know, it's been a long term, everybody out there wondering, when are they going to start doing something? And then I noticed on this here rails and trails right there on Putnam Boulevard, I'm looking at the way they setting it up to do the trail. Y'all not really allowing yourselves enough space from Putnam Boulevard because right now, since they cut the shoulders of the road, that road is cracking and sinking. And Mr. Flag, you had said they were supposed to went back and correct the way they had gouged and cut down right along the shoulder of that road, right there, I guess along with the post office at. There's a dip into the road. Now, if they put that rails and trail that close to that road, most people when they redo a road, they try to straighten that road. That Putnam Boulevard have winds and turns in it. You already got your fire hydrants right in the ditch. Now you're putting the rails and trails right to... trails right to, right close to that, so you're not allowing yourself enough area to widen the road, improve the road, and put a ditch. But I don't know what kind of engineering that they're actually doing, but they're not really looking at the future. They just throwing something down and later on, it's gonna be a big problem. McCormick Road, they run the sewer lines down the road and it's been potholes over two months. Everybody got to drive down on that lime rock where the water done wash holes in it and there's no one had come back and fixed the road. So I'm just wondering, when are some of these roads gonna be fixed?
Thank you, Mr. Spells, for bringing those issues. Again, as we said, there's no way for us to have an answer when we don't have the question in advance, but our Public Works Director and the Roads Superintendent is here. They're taking notes of that and also ask that you, the same information that you provide to us in transportation meetings, let's just make sure that, Mr. Spells, also is a recipient of that document there and that will answer some of the questions as it relates to the timeliness of the projects that are ongoing. So, thank you so much. Anything else, Mr. Spells?
That'll be it.
Thank you so very kindly. At this time, I will close the public comment section of the agenda, Item 7, Consent Agenda, Items 8 through... I'm sorry. Please forgive me. Commissioner Harris.
Would this be a good time to take a break?
Okay. We will take a three-minute recess. During the recess, we are back in session. We will move immediately to also to become a part of the record. C is the appointment of the City of Polacka Representative to the Better Place Plan Oversight Committee, former Commissioner Phil Leary. Administration is D, declare surplus and authorize sealed bids for 157 Whispering Pine Road in Georgetown. E is General Services, list of surplus inventory. F is Emergency Services, fiscal year 2014 State Homeland Security Grant Program Agreement in the amount of $12,308 for development and enhancement of plans related to county threat and hazard identification. G, Administration, ship emergency repair funds up to $10,000. Recipient, Ruby Jordan. H, Administration, ship home rehabilitation funds up to $20,000, Tenia McCullar. I, Administration, E911 IT Fund Budget Amendment Resolution, $104,005 to record revenue and allow for the expenditure of state rural county grants for system maintenance. J is EMS, Florida Department of Health Subgranted Application of $27,800 to enhance and upgrade our EMS current patient care reporting system. K, Public Works Agreement for Consultant Services with Civil Services Incorporated, $90,105.45. Crescent City Multi-Use Trail Improvements along Main Street in Crescent City. The source is FDOT LAP Funds. L, Public Works Modification Number Four to the Division of Emergency Management Subgrant Agreement, No Cost Time Extension until March 2nd, 2015 to Complete Necessary Design for Front Street in Willaka. M, Public Works Supplemental Agreement Number One to FDOP Advanced Scrap Agreement, $35,135 Additional Construction Funds for the Resurfacing of Strickland Road from County Road 28 to County Road 315. N, Public Works Amendment Number One to Agree with Infrastructure Engineers Incorporated in the amount of $24,159.46 for the Bridge Railing Design Improvements on County Road 209, AKA West River Road. Source of that, of those funds, FDOT SCOP Program. O, Public Works Bid Award, Anderson Columbia Company Incorporated, $688,800. County Road 315 Resurfacing or Reconstruction from State Road 100 to Clay County Line. Source is FDOT Scrap Program. P, Public Works Addendum Number 14 to Agreement with Jones, Edmonds, and Associates Incorporated, $400,000 for Engineering and Construction Services for the Relocation of the Water Main along US 17. Source is FDOT. Are there any items between A through P that needs to be pulled for deliberation, discussion, or clarification modification? Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
With approval, Mr. Chair.
Have a proper motion and a second further discussion. Hearing none all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like signed?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
No, never mind.
All right. Item 8, Mr. Scott Crosby is with us at Naya Creek State Forest Public Hearing for 10-Year Resource Management Plan. Thank you again, Mr. Crosby. Good seeing you again.
Good seeing you.
Yes, sir.
Do I need to introduce myself?
Yes, sir. It would be fabulous.
Scott Crosby with the Florida Forest Service, managing at Naya Creek State Forest, and just wanted to announce that we're having a public hearing on January 21st at 6:30 at the Putnam County Agricultural Extension Office, 111 Yelvington Road, and this is for the 10-Year Resource Management.
You will present these questions with a proper response, and then we likewise want to appreciate our leader for giving those. Do you have a copy, Mr. Bly, of the responses to your questions? You do have a copy. Okay. Just for the benefit of all concerned, question one was, is there currently a mandate from FDOP to mine Phase 1? The response is, the county is required by FDOP Consent Order Number 89-1467 to implement corrective actions for groundwater contamination. Since the early 1990s, the county has been assessing the groundwater contamination at the Putnam County Central Landfield. After evaluating several options, the county selected landfill mining as the preferred remediation method. The second question, who authorized the mining of Phase 1? The response, the Board of County Commissioners agreed that this would be the appropriate course of action during discussion in a public workshop on May 15th, 2012. Next question, who is the mining contractor and how were they chosen? The contractor selected to perform the mining of the first 15 acres is Phillips and Jordan. They were chosen through a competitive bidding process in accordance with the county's purchasing requirements. Question four, what is the scope of work for mining Phase 1? How long is the contract written for and how much will it cost? The current mining project in response has the following scope of work. The work is generally described as excavating the final cover soil and municipal solid waste from portions of the unlined sale of the landfill, screening the excavated municipal waste for recovery of soil material referred herein as reclaimed soil, and transporting and disposing of the screened municipal solid waste in the working face of the active line sale at the same site. The process of excavating and processing waste from landfill is commonly referred to as landfill mining or landfill reclamation. The project has a 365-day completion requirement from the notice to proceed. Project is anticipated to be completed in March of 2015. The budget, the project is budgeted for approximately $2.5 million. The Phillips and Jordan bid is for approximately $2 million. If benzene is located in southern wells, why did we begin mining the north end? The response is benzene has been found in the monitoring wells in two locations. Number one, east of the north end of the Phase 1 landfill, and number two, south of the Phase 1 landfill. The monitoring wells east of the north end of the Phase 1 landfill were determined to be the area of most concern because the contamination is, number one, closest to residential drinking wells; number two, outside the county's property off-site. Mining began at the north end of the landfill to remediate the area of most concern. In addition, this location also maximizes the potential airspace for the Phase 2 expansion, reducing future capital costs for the county. Next question, can benzene from monitoring well 22D reach the Floridian aquifer? The sampling area from this monitoring well is located in the superficial aquifer, which is separated from the Floridian aquifer by the Hawthorne Confining Unit. The low permeability Hawthorne Confining Unit generally prevents benzene from reaching the Floridian aquifer. However, in areas where the confining unit is thin or nonexistent, there is potential for benzene to cross into the Floridian aquifer. Next question, is there any alternative to creating airspace for increased amounts of municipal solid waste being seriously considered? Putnam County Board of County Commissioners created a Citizens Committee to, again, address these options. Question eight, why was an RFP put out after mining Phase 1 began that places all liability on the county for mining Phase 1? The response, to provide uninterrupted disposal capacity at the Putnam County Central Landfield, the mining project could not be delayed pending the results of the RFP for the sale. Because the mining project began before the RFP of the sale was advertised, the cost for mining the first 15, approximately 15 acres, were excluded from the RFP for the sale. The long-term liability for the entire mined area would have been transferred to the purchaser. In addition, all future landfill mining costs and long-term liabilities for the remaining 75-plus acres would also be transferred to a proposed purchaser. Question nine, did the county receive any proposals under Option 4 of the RFP? The county did not receive any proposals under Option 3, which was the immediate purchase with alternative development plan or Option 4, alternative concepts of the RFP. Question 10, what is Phase 3 and what will it cost? The response, Phase 3 is conceptual 75-acre expansion of the Putnam County Central Active Class 1 landfill envisioned by the landfill master plan. Two development options for this Phase 3 expansion were discussed in the landfill master plan. Number one, mining development option. Number two, north development option. The mining development option was conceptually estimated to cost $71,150,000 over a period of 120 years. North development option was conceptually estimated to cost $48,040,000 over a period of 80 years. The mining development option provides approximately 5 million cubic yards more disposal capacity. That provides approximately $220 million more in revenue and 40 years additional disposal capacity. Last question, 11, what is the objective of mining Phases 1, 2, and 3, and would that change if the landfill was sold to a private contractor? Response, currently the plans are to only mine the Phase 1 landfill, which is the closed unlined Class 1 landfill. The Phase 2 landfill is the active lined Class 1 landfill and is not proposed to be mined at this time. The Phase 3 is a conceptual future lined Class 1 landfill and is not proposed to be mined at this time. The two main objectives of mining the Phase 1 landfill are, number one, remediate off-site groundwater contamination; number two, provide a future expansion area for a new lined Class 1 landfill, which of course is the Phase 2 expansion. The objectives of the landfill mining would not change if the landfill was sold to a private contractor. There was also a requested action of FDOP documents that are on the FDOP website, and again, those documents, it is, they are so cumbersome and they take up so much space until the reference is to get that information from FDOP's website. Thank you again, Mr. Bly, for submitting those questions. Appreciate you being here. Yes, sir, if you choose.
I just wanted to answer to the answers.
You want to answer to the answers?
Respond, I'm sorry.
Okay, respond to the answers.
In the original part, before the question started, on that document that was sent in, I requested to formally respond to each one of these questions, to each one of the answers on each one of the questions that I submitted. I don't know if you saw that or...
Got to make.
Okay. So, on the first question, is there a mandate? If you look at the county website or just about any document that deals with the landfill, you'll see that mandate is used in all the documents and on the website when referring to the landfill. And I would like that to stop. I mean, if there's no mandate, there's a difference between what you had said before, a strong suggestion, and a mandate. Mandate means we don't have a choice, so we do have a choice, and that's why I'd like that mandate to be removed from all the official documents and website. Two, who authorized mining of Phase 1? It said that the BOCC made an official, during a public workshop, they made a decision on this during a workshop. In the sunshine law, that's illegal. So, if there was a decision made in the workshop...
There was a consensus in a workshop. The board can consent and the administrator, basically, instead of moving forward with something, there was no need at that time for formal action for a vote to be taken there, and that's why I say it agreed.
Okay. And the mining contractor, how they were chosen? This was done by Jones and Edmonds? The bidding process went through Jones and Edmonds and they selected the mining contractor? Is that correct?
It was through the competitive bidding process, and it goes according to the purchasing requirements. Jones, Edmonds is a consultant. They, we consult them and they recommend, but they're not driving.
Okay. So they didn't remove anyone from the bidding process?
Okay. Now you're getting into technical areas that the administrator and the director may need to elaborate on because you're digging deeper and it's not a problem. It certainly is commendable that you want to know these things, but I do think that it's going to be, the proper forum is going to be the director and administrator so that they can drill down and we can, if you want more specificity in these responses, I'm sure our director is, and Jones Edmonds certainly is here. And I also believe that we do have the capabilities of this information here so that it is crystal clear to everyone. There's never an intent on behalf of this board to mislead or to use words that could be privately interpreted there, and we don't have a problem at all revising the language there. And again, I commend you for your thoroughness here, but they're taking notes while you speak, and I'm sure there can be some follow-up.
Okay, thank you.
Continue, please.
The scope of work for mining Phase 1?
Okay.
Now, I know that you said that the contract was written for one year with the mining company, but in the Putnam County 2014-15 annual budget, there's budgeted for the next five years, $12 million for Phase 1 landfill mining. This year, they had estimated 1.47 million, but for the next four years after this, there's 2 million, 3.6 million and on. So, I realize that we wrote a contract for one year.
Yes, sir.
But that doesn't mean that this is the last contract we'll be writing, and we've obviously budgeted the money out for the next five years on that.
Be assured, Mr. Bly, that we cannot budget money unless it's some type of contract that we are engaged in already that exceeds more than one year. If we are in a situation where we are projecting, there's a difference in projecting versus actually budgeting. And so, what you may be referring to is projections for future years, and each year that the budget workshops take place, that's where the fine tuning comes in. We have to be able to project what's going to happen, you know, just prudent planning and things of that nature. We project the vision out there, and so the fine tuning and the tweaking does happen every single year to make sure. So just because it's there does not mean it becomes a reality. And so, that will happen as we engage. As a matter of fact, this year, we're going to have what we would call some pre-budget meetings, which will be visioning sessions, because we spend a lot of time putting out fires and we don't spend as much time envisioning and visioning what we need to be really zooming in on, what are our constituents and what are the citizens saying the priority should be, and then what have we developed as a list of priorities? And so, we're going to do that prior to talking about what we can afford so that we can make sure that priorities are appropriate.
Okay. Well, I'm just going by what Jones and Edmonds have put out, and in the Phase 1 feasibility study...
Yes, sir.
From 2007, they estimated the cost for remediation at the landfill would be 3.5 billion, would be, billion dollars. And it was in that feasibility study that it was said that this was undoable, we couldn't afford to remediate Phase 1 because of the cost. And so, they went with a wait-and-see answer to the FDOP suggestion. And there was also 2.38, or 238 million dollar affluent cleanup that was added to that, and it would, they had estimated it would take 65 years to clean up the affluent of the leachate that would be left over from the mining. So, in the newer estimate, I believe you said it was 70 million? So in the newer estimate, um, I believe you said it was seventy million or something like that earlier? The, um, was it seventy or forty? Yeah, seventy-one.
And that's over a period of a hundred and twenty years. Uh, I will be somewhere else.
Yeah. I'm, I'm pretty sure we all will, but we have to deal with it now, but...
Yes, sir, this is true.
So, so there's a, there's a huge, uh, difference between that estimate, um, roughly four billion dollars of cleaning up the landfill and the new estimate. Um, and I know that it's more years in the original...
Well, well, again, the prioritization process, you know, has to take place. And whether we're talking about mandates or whether we're talking about orders or, or directives or at the same time, what's environmentally, uh, appropriate to be done. Uh, we should not, in our county or any other county, for that matter, be made to do anything, uh, there. It's everything good to you is not good for you. And so we have to be able to, uh, separate in our own minds how we can prioritize and at the same time, pay the piper. Um, and in, in, in Putnam County, not unlike any other county, there is not a flowing well of, of revenue, uh, that's there. And so that's why we are, 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 are a work in progress. And we're doing our level best to make sure that our administrator, our director, in all concern, uh, maximize the dollar. And that's why we have, uh, Jones Edmonds and, and, and we are, we're very pleased with their services. Continue on, sir.
Um, uh, number six, uh, can benzene from MW twenty-two D reach the Floridian aquifer? There's a reason why I use MD, uh, MW twenty-two D.
Okay.
Um, in the answer, it says the, uh, well is located in the superficial aquifer. Now, I can see how there would be confusion. In the feasibility study from two thousand and seven, Jones Edmunds lists lower superficial aquifer as I and the, uh, intermediate as D. And then in subsequent documents, they changed that to lower superficial as L, intermediate as I, and deep as D, as they're supposed to be. But there's confusion as to which well is deep and which well is intermediate and where that, uh, contamination exists. And the MW twenty-two D is not in the superficial aquifer. It's actually in the deep aquifer right above the Floridian aquifer. It's located at the Floridian aquifer. So to say that this is not a problem is assuming a little too much, I think.
Okay, so you have documentation that would indicate MW twenty-two D is located other than where we're saying it is?
Well, the same feasibility study redone actually shows D, denotes D as being deep wells. So if you refer to any, uh, current, um, Jones Edmunds study, you'll see that, uh, D denotes deep wells. Um, I can show you one here, I guess, but...
Okay, what I'd like to do is to give them an opportunity, not in this meeting, but an opportunity to respond, uh, to six with the, um, uh, MW twenty-two D designation and to get, uh, clarification for the benefit of this commission there. So if you will continue forward, we'll make sure that that happens. Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you. Um, and, and question seven, uh, was there an alternative to creating airspace? And increasing the amount of MSW being considered? Now, I, I know that we've put together a citizens committee a, a second time. This time, we gave them a lot more time to look at alternatives, so, um, we'll hopefully find alternatives to that three-hundred-foot mountain, but...
Okay, uh, again, to say about a three-hundred-foot mound, I don't know, again, where those numbers come from. All, all I can do is assure you of this. Uh, we always want and solicit input from all of our citizens. We, we want that, but we want our citizens to have met it through their madness, rhyme to their reason and to have understanding as to where their information comes from. Uh, we will be chasing, uh, rumors, uh, forever and a day if people just talk off the top of their head. Bring us the source of the information when it's being brought. We will have our experts, uh, to peruse it, review it, and then, uh, tell us, uh, from the perspective of what we need to know as relates to the source. When it is all said and done, who you see up here will make those difficult decisions. And it, we don't have long to do it, so there is no filibustering, not under my watch. There will not be filibustering. We will make the tough decisions. We will not make every single citizen of our county happy, but you can count on the fact that there will be due diligence and that we're going to do our very best to protect us economically, to protect us environmentally, and to make sure that we can move us forward because this is home. What else do you have, Mr. Bly?
Um, question number eight.
Number eight, you said?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, question number eight, uh, has to deal with, uh, deals with, um, the RFP. Now, I realize the RFP is no longer valid.
Correct.
But we would also not like to see the same type of RFP put out in the future because of certain areas of concern. And part of that is, um, uh, you know, the, the answer says that we were not, um, maybe, let's see, the RFP sale was advertised, the cost for mining were excluded. The long-term liability for the entire mined area would have been transferred to the purchaser. In the, uh, RFP, it does say in there, uh, under option three, I believe, um...
You're referring to the former RFP, sir?
Yes, sir.
That RFP died of natural causes. Uh, we will have a new RFP. It will be public record and it will be authorized by this commission, so there's no relativity to the previous one as it relates to... You're saying possibly, but I don't want to be presumptuous on what this commission is going to do. I don't speak, uh, for them until we unanimously or predominantly agree on, uh, on an RFP. So I appreciate you raising the issue of the past, uh, there, so it'll be in our memory so that history is not repeated in, in, in an adverse way. Uh, but, uh, give us the benefit of the doubt that the new RFP will be custom and tailored to what the current conditions are.
Okay, well, then I'll just leave that.
Thank you.
Um, number ten, what, what is phase three and what will it cost? Um, in the, um, answer that came back, phase three is a conceptual seventy-five acre expansion. And currently, um, the mining is not being done. But in the, once again, in the budget, phase three is budgeted for two point two million dollars this year and two million, three million, two million, two million. So, and that's phase three.
When you say this year, you're talking fourteen, fifteen?
Twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, yes. So, uh, there's two answers to that question. One is we're not spending anything and the other in the budget says we are.
Okay. Always remember that the budget, when it is developed, it is based on the, the vision and the projections and the direction that is given, uh, from the commission to the administrator. And then, once we get to that point, uh, there is a such thing as there's been a change. And right now, we have kind of sort of been in holding pattern on some of these issues. It's not, uh, anything that we're taking lightly and we do get our share of, uh, bashing, uh, from the general public because, you know, sometime we, we, we don't know it until we read it or we see it. Uh, but our administrators, our directors, our consultants, they're working on this project as a priority every day. And when they get, uh, new signals, uh, from the legislators, then, you know, the bottom line is, it's like, don't fix the road and then dig it up to replace the water land, you know? So it's almost like, you know, you, we want to make sure that the cart is not before the horse. We slowed things down, uh, not because we could afford to, uh, uh, but we couldn't afford not to, is basically what, what has happened. So, uh, we are going to have an update, uh, very soon. Uh, as a matter of fact, I think within the next couple of weeks, we're going to have an update, uh, as it relates to, uh, the committee developments, whatever those are. And the committee also, uh, who's serving at the pleasure of this legislative body, uh, they, they get their share of, of, of hits. Uh, uh, I'm not interested in the, the politics, uh, that's behind this. I'm interested in what's best for this county and that's the way we'll be going.
As am I.
Yes, sir, and I appreciate that, sir.
Um, number eleven would be the last question. The objective of mining phases one, two, and three. And currently, uh, the plans are only to mine phase one. Uh, the phase two landfill is active. The current operation is taking the waste from phase one, putting it in phase two. And I know that right now, we're running out of space in phase two and we're looking for space and that's why we're mining phase one. But it's, it's obviously not going to work because you can't take everything from phase one and put it in phase two when phase two is running out of space already without expanding into a new area. And that's what's prohibitive in cost and that's why we're trying to do things the way we are. Uh, so, you know, I, I really, I really don't like to see, um, you know, like you said, we're trying to do something that's gonna, um, re- relieve some of the liability on some of the people in the county, um, because of the special assessment and because we're, we're not flowing in money, we don't have a lot of money to spend. And we do have problems out there with benzene and contamination, say, uh, Wilkinson Wells next door and everything. But what I'm, what I'm trying to say here is, phase three was, was, you know, and, and it's a, it's a good idea because we're going to be in the landfill business for a long time, apparently. But if we're not going to be in the landfill business for a long time, then maybe these things will work themselves out. I'm just hoping that our future will be somewhere less than looking at more trash and, and actually getting rid of what we have there. And environmentally speaking, that would be a good thing. So that's all I have.
Mr. Bly, again, I commend you and, and appreciate you taking the time. It, it, it reveals that you put a lot of thought into this and we want you to hold us accountable. Don't have a problem with that at all. Um, we do have, uh, a, a lot of our citizens who operate by the conspiracy theory and people throw rocks and hide their hand. You're not one of those, so thank you. Appreciate you being here and I'm sure there will be some additional follow-up with our director, uh, as well as Jones Edmunds. And, um, feel free to come before us and the way you presented yourself, again, we commend you.
Thank you very much.
Item ten on this agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, yes, sir.
I just make one comment in reference to, uh, the question about altering the, uh, words used in the description of mandate versus strongly suggested.
Mr. Clerk.
In any historic documents, as you're clerk to the board and custodian the record, uh, we would not be able to go back and alter those...
Correct.
Documents moving forward, that would be allowable, but we wouldn't go back and alter...
That, that is correct.
Documents approved by this commission.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Clerk. We, we appreciate that, uh, that statement of fact. All right, item ten, Ms. Martha Babson requests to discuss the landfill issue. Thank you likewise for requesting to be on this agenda, uh, and, um, you have the floor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for letting me talk. Um, the landfill issue, obviously, has just brought up a lot of dissension among lots of groups. Is that me?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Um, I'll try to be brief this time. So, my desire in being here, um, is to set the record straight with not my opinion. Nobody cares about my opinion or what I think, but what I've found out that are factual. Most of the people on the commission are going to know everything I say, but it's basically for, um, the audience. So I'd like to start off chronologically. Now, if I'm going to say something in this little talk that says, "I think," I will say, "This is my opinion." Otherwise, what I have found is verifiable, documentable, Google-able, whatever. Okay, going back to twenty thirteen, the county found out, well, it knew all along, but it was prudently decided, um, that in twenty sixteen, for one reason or another, where, one reason or another, we were going to run out of capacity at our landfill. We also had to spend over time twenty-five million to remediate the landfill contamination that we have now. We also had to put aside approximately nine million dollars for closing off the landfill whenever that event happened. You don't just walk away from a landfill. So the county said, you know, we can open up the next section, but when we do, it's not only going to be more expensive. But then Putnam County gets up over the line for the federal government EPA. Now we get regulations coming from the federal government about methane release and mid, and so on. So a committee was formed and it was decided the most prudent way, and we can talk about regional landfills and we can talk about so on, but the most prudent way is to put out a request for proposals and see if somebody that's a private company looking to make a profit and be efficient would come in and take over the whole mess with great, um, contract, uh, parts for the county. In other words, the county would keep control, um, of how much waste was going to come in from other counties. The county would get preferred tipping rates, tipping fees for its own citizens, um, and so on. I'll get into that a little bit more. The RFP was, uh, written up with a lot of tweaks here and there and, um, sent out all over North America. This wasn't something underhanded, it wasn't snuck in by Mr. Leary. It was sent out in, in landfill and construction, uh, journals and it was out for about four months. There were respondents from Canada, from Texas, from, we have two respondents that actually fulfilled the requirements of needing a performance bond, which meant they were tried and true, proven, and a guarantee from a parent company. So they weren't fly-by-night, "I want to experiment with something." I think it's important to bring up for the benefit of the audience that alternative energy and alternate, um, waste disposal methods were encouraged in the RFP and we did not get any response from anyone there. As a matter of fact, the man who has spoken here about his gasification plant was directly contacted by the county to notify him that he was, um, invited to make, um, a proposal. Didn't do it. All right, so what the beneficial conditions that this one republic, that's the one the county was choosing? The beneficial conditions were this, and I'm, I know this is over, it's in the past. We, we, right now, Putnam County pays forty-two dollars a ton to dump trash. Republic was going to guarantee eighteen dollars for at least the next ten, for ten years minimum, always lower for Putnam County residents. So we're talking economics here, which is important because Putnam County is officially the poorest county in all of Florida. And I don't know, my opinion, I don't know how many other people could care less whether we own that part of the landfill or not. I would prefer not to have to pay an extra hundred and seventy-five bucks a year to look at that it's mine. Now, um, um, all right, so we had the RFP, we had got a great contract. They were going to, they, being Republic, were going to pay all the money it took, which we estimated at twenty-five million, to take over the cleaning up of the landfill. So not only do we not have to do that anymore, the money we've budgeted, we can use. The closing fees of nine million was ours back again. Um, Republic, I didn't see anything wrong with this. I'm not a fan of government, nothing personal, but, um, the, the more government can privatize any of its endeavors, the more efficiently it is and the better for everybody. So we would have had a reduction, we the citizens would have had a reduction in our tax assessment, assessment instead of an increase. And we can look forward now to an increase every year because when we open up the new facility, it's going to cost more and more money. Now, I was sold on this matter. I was very, very pleased to see that we had such a good deal. But suddenly, out of somewhere come, does this mean I have nine more minutes, sir? Okay, so out of somewhere comes a whole backwash of disagreement. The first thing I remember hearing was, "We don't want a landfill, we want alternative stuff." Well, I had never heard of gasification. I spent two days, I thought, "Whoa, that might could..." I spent two full days, um, searching as much as I could about it. There are so many downsides. Then there's this, "Don't sell, don't sell, we don't want to sell our property." Well, the way I look at it as an analogy is you have a hu, say you have a hundred percent of your landfill. Let's say that's a... Let's say that's a hundred thousand dollars. You take twenty-two percent over here, 'cause you're not selling the whole landfill, you're selling twenty-two percent, and you make an investment. One that gives you twenty-five million, and the money you've got in escrow, it gives a, a constant stream of revenue that you're getting in from, it's a great investment. You still got eighty-eight thousand dollars left. So, that's how I looked at, "I don't wanna sell the landfill." And I saw a recent paper with people are still holding signs saying, "Don't sell the landfill." What, even that gasification guy, he wanted five hundred, he wanted seventy acres, and four to five hundred as a buffer. So that's like, almost double what Republic, and he wanted to, us to sell it to him. So, "Don't sell the landfill," doesn't make sense to me. Now, I wouldn't go into detail, 'cause I don't have a lot of time, but the Trash Mountain stuff. Okay, our, um, I come from West Palm Beach. I go by Port St. Lucie, and I, I know all those landfills down there. And the birds are only there, you know, when it's uncovered during the day. At the end of the day, it's always dirt. That's what you see, it's a dirt mountain. But as they're working, the birds are smart, they get there real early, and they, and they beat the, the moving machines. Now, our, our, um, what do you call it, our, our permit, our permit is only for a hundred and fifty feet. So we can't have a two-hundred-foot mountain. Our permit's only for two-hundred feet. And in this, uh, publication that goes around, it even went on for a couple of paragraphs, how that, "It's gonna be so high, it's gonna interfere with flights." Well, tell you what, we already have Federal Aviation Administration okay for the hundred, you know, for what we're permitted for, so that, that's kind of ridiculous. And the other thing about jobs, I already mentioned that we're the poorest county. But the gasification man stood here and, and answered the questions of a couple of commissioners about, um, Mr. McIntyre, twelve hundred jobs, is that direct or indirect? And he said, "It was indirect." And I don't know how many people in the audience understood what he meant by that. But he also said that he figured it through a government, um, um, list, what do you call them, a chart. Um, in industry, uh, energy industry jobs, get a five-to-seven multiplier. Which means, if you have two-hundred people that you're gonna hire, you can multiply that number by between five and seven, so he picked six, so there's twelve hundred. And what that means is there's two-hundred more people that are gonna eat lunch every day, gonna get their cars fixed, gonna shop at Publix, and so on and so on. So, it's an economic impact to surrounding businesses who may hire more people to deal with the influx. That's what twelve hundred jobs was all about. And I, and the reason, okay, I got five more minutes, good, because those are all the, the arguments that keep coming up, that I don't think, somebody standing there saying, "Don't sell the landfill," do they wanna ship it out, or, or, or they wanna sell it to the gas guys? Or, "If we ship it out, we lose control. We're at the mercy of whoever, um, we send our trash to. Um, if we have a regional landfill, we lose control." Because get, two people from Putnam, two people from the other county. It's, it's another bureaucratic layer. It, it isn't our landfill anymore, it's like a commune, in my opinion. Now, this is what gets me about this publication. It says repeatedly, over and over and over again, "No air pollution. Very little to no pollution of any type, no air pollution." Well, look it up. I'm sorry, but that is the, that I take personally. Gasification, that other man stood here and talked about how you have to make liquid gas. That, that's one of the byproducts of high heat burning of any type. Bio-, uh, biomass energy, sort of blah, gasification, dioxins. The most dangerous to me and chemical known. All right, so, here's a list. This is from the Florida Department of Air Pollution. Uh, annual air pollution as determined by Florida DEP for, um, um, burning. Carbon monoxide, nitrogen oxides, particulates, PM-10, those are particulate matter smaller than ten microns that get into your, that are able to get into your lower respiratory tract. Sulfur dioxide, volatile organic compounds, hydrochloric acid, lead, and mercury. And they figured for six-hundred-and-eighty-six tons a day, this would come out, this total is four-hundred-and-ten and five-hundred thousand, four-hundred-and-ten and a half thousand pounds a year. And the reason they know that is 'cause they're capturing it. That's the whole problem with these alternative energies at this point in time, later on. But you have to capture that stuff in the air pollutant field. Uh, and, and that's why five or six companies in Europe, let's, uh, Isle of Wight, and, uh, place in Scotland, Dunfries and Sco- anyway, they opened, were open for a year, maybe two, done. Too many leakages, too much emissions, problems, fiscally unworkable. We have no commercially viable gasification plant in this entire country. And it doesn't look like it. So I wanna say that I personally think that if I were county commissioner, and I was in charge of decisions that are gonna affect seventy-two thousand people, that's how many people there are here in Putnam County. If I were gonna make a decision, I would've gone with the same kind of tried and true, yes, it isn't high-cutting technology, but we're responsible to our, we're responsible to our citizens. And I, I would've been very careful to make certain I had a tried and true and proven and reputable kind of company that I chose to take over all my headaches. And I wanna thank you for that. Now, the reason I passed out this thing to you folks, and there are copies over here if anybody wants to read it, this is just one. I'm an old English teacher, I'm old, but I was an English teacher. So, um, I was looking at this, this, this is the thing that I think a lot of people are getting, uh, real misinformation from. And I, there's one sentence right in the middle here. He's talking about Mr. McIntyre, not to get personal, but, um, they said to Mr. McIntyre, this is the task force, why he hadn't made a presentation to the county. And he said, "His lawyers advised him not to, because, not to spend the money to do it, because they were just looking for a manager." Well, lawyers get paid more than minimum wage. I would think that they would've read the RFP and knew that it was a proposal for sale. Also, Mr. McIntyre had been personally contacted about this, and, and so, but, see how it goes on? It says, "Then the members of the task force started asking, um, who, I'm sorry, this is so small, um, how many others had not made presentations for the landfill?" Oh, like, "The task force didn't realize it was for sale." They didn't catch that one, did they? So the task force looks stupid, McIntyre looks great, and so on. It's, it's subtle inference, propaganda, misconception, factually incorrect, and, um, um, and you can read on down here, it's like, "Nope, no air pollution, no, none, and somebody's doing a dirty job here." I mean, there's conspiracy and, and corruption. And before I go, let me tell you this. Of seven county commissioners in Palm Beach County, five of them while I lived there were indicted and taken to jail on corruption charges because the commissioners in Palm Beach County have a couple million dollars in their own individual pots that they can give to friends, or whoever, and whatever. Thank God we're that poor, given human nature, that I really doubt there's any of anything like that going on here in Putnam County.
Thank you, Ms. Babson, for your discussion. We will move forward to code enforcement. Mr. Salmon, do you need any setup time? Okay, we'll give him a couple of minutes to set up, so we'll call this a two-minute recess. And, uh, don't leave. Thank you.
Everything is on there. It's not up there, though.
Number two thousand twelve, double oh six twenty-eight. Uh, address is two thirteen April Avenue, Interlaken. Mr. Salmon, welcome.
Thank you, good morning. Um, I'm gonna roll through a few photographs first, and then I'll go through the details. These are some photographs that you didn't have. Uh, some of them you do, some of them you didn't. Uh, these are some that I took yesterday. This mobile home at least one time looked like it might've been salvageable, but, uh, um, as you can see from the photographs, it's been terrorized. Property was first seen on September seventh, two thousand twelve, and was found, the mobile home was brought illegally onto the property without permits. Staff attempted to find the owner, we did find him. Uh, discussion happened, uh, over the next couple of months. Uh, ultimately, staff sent a notice of violation and hearing out on April fourth, two thousand thirteen. The special magistrate heard the case, uh, on the property on June twentieth, two thousand thirteen, and found the property in violation. He gave the owner until September twenty-third, two thousand thirteen, to bring the property up to code, or a twenty-five-dollar day fine would commence, a hundred-dollar administrative fee was also charged. Uh, the property remained in violation. On November twenty-first, two thousand thirteen, the special magistrate, uh, uh, concurred that the property was still in violation and, uh, ordered the lien to be, uh, uh, recorded. Uh, that happens, nothing happened after that. Uh, we went back to the special magistrate on September eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, and he recommended the county either abate or foreclose on the property, and we are here today to do that.
Thank you so much. Do we have any representatives, um, property owners or neighbors concerning case two thousand twelve, double oh six twenty-eight, uh, two thirteen April Avenue, Interlaken? Anyone here? Okay, seeing no movement, uh, we do have the staff requesting that the board authorize abatement on the property. The recommended action is that, uh, we proceed with the abatement, discussion from the commission.
Mr. Chair, I move approval for staff recommendations on this case.
A second.
We have a proper motion and a second, that staff recommendation to proceed on with the abatement of this property at two thirteen April Avenue, further discussion. Had time to consider? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign, motion carries. Thank you. The next case that is being presented is case number two thousand eleven dash double oh nine forty-three, one twenty-one, Gus Gordon Road, Hawthorne, Florida. Mr. Salmon.
Uh, once again, there's, uh, some photographs of the property. Uh, this property was first seen on December second, two thousand eleven, and found that unsafe mobile home and other junk and debris. Notice of violation was sent out to the owner on January thirteenth, two thousand twelve. Nothing happened, and notice of hearing was sent out on May seventeenth, two thousand twelve. Special magistrate, um, heard the case on May seventeenth, two thousand and twelve, and found the property in violation. Uh, he gave the owner until July first, two thousand twelve, to bring the property up to code, or a twenty-five-dollar day fine would start, and a hundred-dollar administrative fee. Uh, property owners came in and pulled the permit, and even though the permit was issued, uh, nothing happened. They did not require any inspection, they didn't do any work. On October twenty-fifth, two thousand twelve, the special magistrate found the property to be in violation and ordered the lien to be recorded. Uh, nothing continued to happen. Communications, uh, continued with three parties that were involved in the property. None of them did anything. Uh, we took it back to the special magistrate on March twentieth, two thousand fourteen. He recommended that the county either abate or foreclose the property, and we're requesting to, the board to authorize us to go ahead, uh, with, uh, abatement.
Thank you so much for the summary, um, and the history. Is there any public representation for one twenty-one Gus Gordon Road, Hawthorne, Florida? Property owner, neighbor, concerned party. Seeing no movement, commissioners, you have, uh, this information presented to you that a request from staff with also recommended action to proceed with abatement on this property. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve staff recommendation on abatement on case two thousand one-one dash zero zero nine four-three.
Second.
Have a proper motion and a second further discussion. Yes, sir, I just asked whether... Okay, that's, that's what I was asking earlier. Do you have some comments for us, sir? Please come forward.
Would you want me to withdraw my motion?
No, sir. Good morning, sir. If you will speak in the microphone and tell us your name and address for the record, and then, uh, you can talk to us.
My name is Stephen J. Plaskovich.
Okay.
My address is four one one Cabot Street, Inverness, Florida.
Okay, welcome. What, uh, concerns, uh, on this case?
Well, this is, you know, this is a comedy of errors from the very beginning.
Okay.
I am the banker.
You are the banker?
Right.
Okay.
I loaned the money for these people to buy the house.
Okay.
I don't see them present here. They're currently buying the house from me, and it's their responsibility to fix what was broken because it was in very, very, very good shape when they took it over.
Okay.
I paid the bank off, who had foreclosed on it. It had belonged to these same people before. I paid the bank off due to family connections, and spent about twenty thousand dollars upgrading the home. I didn't bring pictures, but the pictures that he showed of that other mobile home looked like about this one. There was every piece of drywall in the house was either caked or punched or damaged. We could, excuse me, we entirely redid the front, the interior of the house. We, uh, fixed the well, we fixed the air conditioning system, we put flooring in it. New cabinets throughout, new toilets, new laboratories, um, new skirting in places, new screens on the window, replaced some glass, just a number of things. And you guys keep coming after me, and I don't feel like loaning them any more money to fix this house.
Okay.
You know, you're threatening to take it away from me, but all you're gonna do is take part of my life savings away from me.
First of all, we are not threatening.
Ah, okay.
Okay, yes, sir, there is, there is no threat. We have some very, very serious, uh, health hazards here, safety hazards here, and, and, and I think that when you look at the timeline, uh, from this case...
I've kept after them, your people and your code enforcement have kept after them. I've loaned them money for materials.
Who is the property owner, sir? Who's the property owner?
The property is being bought by Mr. and Mrs. Michael Rutledge.
Who is the property owner?
I guess I'm of record now.
Okay, I think that there is accountability and responsibility. Uh, we can empathize with the position that you are in, uh, there as the lender, or the banker, in your words, but our sympathy does not correct, uh, the hazardous conditions, uh, of this property. And it's, it's, it, it's a position that none of us would want to be in.
I've been told that everything has been fixed.
You've been told that everything's been fixed?
Absolutely.
By whom, sir?
By Mr. and Mrs. Rutledge.
Okay, Mr. and Mrs. Rutledge are not the authorities on that. So if all you have is...
They had the work done.
Okay, well, uh, again, we're not going to engage in a debate here. You have the competent staff of Putnam County, uh, who is definitely not picking on you or singling you out in your property. Uh, when is the last time you communicated with those individuals?
I talk to them all the time.
You talk to them all the time?
Yeah, I talk to them this week.
So how did you know about this meeting?
Huh?
How did you know about this meeting?
I received a letter.
Okay, uh, so you're saying you did not communicate with them since you received the letter? You came from Inverness here?
Yeah, no, I've, I've talked to them, they said everything was done.
Okay.
And they've requested people to come out and look at it, and nobody's come out and looked at it.
Mr. Salmon, the most current visit to that property verifies why we are here? Is that correct, sir?
Right, we've not been inside, but, uh, they required permits to do whatever they were gonna do. Uh, I think I included a letter from them in the, in the, they said it. Anyways, if, if they call code enforcement, we're gonna go, "Okay, well, it does." They haven't gotten a call to go out.
Okay, so no permits have been pulled, to your knowledge?
There was a permit pulled.
Well, they had one, it was...
Yeah.
But it, it died.
How many years ago, sir?
I don't know.
Okay.
Couple.
Well, apparently there is some breakdown in communication. Commissioner Libley?
Um, Mr. Refitch, was yours mortgage, uh, registered in the county of Marion?
No.
Or, private agreement between you and the, um, Rutledge? Private agreement between you and the Rutledge family?
And we've cleared that up. They, they thought that it wasn't in their name, but it was in their name because I had my closing agent put it in their name.
Well, what I'm going, getting at, you were copied on all these correspondence as the lien holder, so...
Counsel, are there any technical difficulties that you...
No, other than if there's some suggestion that it has been remedied. Now, I don't understand why the people here aren't here...
Right, I'm not a, you know, I can't go out there and look. I could look at it for 10 days, and I wouldn't know if it was fixed properly or not. So it's not up to me to say, oh, good job.
When's the last time you were on the property, Mr. Stephen?
I'm gonna say about three months ago. I did not go in the house at that time.
Did the yard still look like these pictures? Have you seen these pictures?
Yeah, but that's not their yard. That's not part of the property. That's all a family compound there. Their property comes to within maybe 15 feet of the edge of the mobile home. The rest of the property where all that trash and so forth is just family property, not theirs.
Mr. Salmon, does this yard pictures that I see here, is that part of the code's enforcement issue involved here? So it is relevant?
Well, but it's not their property.
Pardon?
It's not their property. I can't say who put the trash there, but it's not their property.
How much land goes with the home that...
Three acres.
So their property.
But the property goes from about 10 feet or 15 feet from the home due west, and everything you see there is due east.
Apparently there is some type of disconnect between you and the Rutledge.
A big disconnect.
You, you all are not communicating...
Oh, yes, we are.
Okay.
I mean, they've been telling me, what you guys are telling me is not true, you know? So I guess I'm gonna call them liars.
So they say we liars, or they say...
No, not you. I'm saying that they told me that everything was fixed.
Okay.
And I know that I paid, I paid $800 for the electrician to go in there, a licensed bonded electrician, and I bought about $1,000 worth of roofing supplies. The man was a 27-year roofing mechanic, Mr. Rutledge. And his uncle owned the company, and they were gonna fix the roof. But, you know, as far as if it's done properly, I don't know.
Mr. Salmon, does that roofing job have to be a permitted job?
Well, yeah, the permits were needed for a lot of the stuff they did. They pulled the permit, but they never got any inspections.
She wants you to the microphone.
They never got inspections, the permit expired. It's not been renewed, we've not got any new permits. The electrical inspector evidently didn't pull a permit either, even if he's a contractor, because we would've had an inspection, and if they, if they would've called in an inspection, we would've done one then, so I don't, I'd, we'd be happy to go look at the property.
Well, the special magistrate heard the case.
Correct.
And this case commenced December of 2011, and the mobile home was unsafe then, and according to our record, is unsafe now. And even if permits were pulled, if inspections were not done and that permit was not consummated, then we still have other issues in addition to the issues that we currently have.
Correct.
Thank you so much. Any further testimony?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have the Rutledge's been making their payments on a regular basis? They still make their payments?
Yes.
And they tell you that everything is done?
Yes, and I, because these are poor people, and I understand that. And I readjusted the whole deal from nine and three-quarters percent interest to no interest whatsoever. And every payment they make is pure principal, and I've cut the time almost in half that they owe. So when they make a payment, it's pure principal, and when they're done with it, they owe.
But are you aware of the safety hazards and that whether you like it or not, you are responsible for...
I'm not aware of safety hazards, no.
Okay.
I'm aware of cosmetic problems.
Well, what we need you to understand is that this is not merely a cosmetic issue. This is a life safety case.
I don't know where that would be.
Okay, that means that...
I've seen, I mean, the plumbing was fixed, and the roof supposedly has been fixed. The electrician is a licensed bonded electrical contractor in Putnam County, Mike's Electric, and I paid him for his job. So I can't imagine that there's any life-threatening problems.
What authority do we need for our inspectors to be able to do another inspection, Mr. Salmon, there that would include the entire property?
Basically, we need the owner to allow us to go in and do the inspections. They've not called for any inspections, not even the electrical contractor called for inspections. He didn't pull a permit, which is normal for an electrician to do. So we need to go, they could call us, and we would be glad to go look at it and see what they've done, and...
Counsel, I'm confused about who actually is the owner. Is this gentleman the owner, or is the Rutledge family the owner?
I don't know, he, he said he was, but then, but then, I, I'm confused also, I don't know.
Okay, let me ask you, from, again, from a legal perspective, do this board have the authority to continue this case for a time certain? And the owner, whoever the true owner is, give authorization, and we actually have the most current inspection with you present so that you will understand that it's not a cosmetic issue, that it is a health and safety issue? And if this board can reach consensus on 30 days, I'm saying that should be enough adequate time. I don't know whether two weeks should be preferred because of the issues that are out there. Are 30 days, Mr. Salmon, can you tell me what's reasonable?
Yeah, we can, we can look at it within 30 days, that would be fine.
So can, is it permissible that we...
That's fine, where you could go ahead and authorize abatement subject to this inspection occurring within the next 30 days to the code enforcement satisfaction, at which point they would not continue with the abatement.
What's the pleasure of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with you. I think that they, I would like to give them the extra time to check this out and see what's going on.
Well, I just presented two alternatives. Either, either continue this hearing and come back after that inspection or authorize abatement today, subject to the inspection. And if the inspection is successful or it passes, then codes would not pursue the abatement, and if it doesn't, they would go ahead and pursue it without having to come back to the board.
I would, I would rather the continuance so that it is in the same form here, there. I want this gentleman, who came from a little distance, to be with us today to be able to accompany if that can be coordinated, and rather than to quote, have the hammer over their head, although they may have placed the hammer over their own head, their own hammer, I would rather them not have that. The same thing will occur in 30 days, that's just my opinion. Commissioner Harris?
Yes, I, I would like to make a motion that may differ from what you just said.
That's right.
All right. I'm gonna withdraw my motion. It's, we already have a motion and a second on the floor.
All right, so motion withdrawn, second?
Withdrawn.
Withdrawn, open discussion again, Commissioner Harris.
If they go out there and they find that they have done things, but they haven't pulled a permit, I would like for them to have the opportunity to go ahead and pull the permit and go ahead and do it right. So I don't think all that can be done in 30 days. You know, it may need to continue, so if they've done what they've said... Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we make the full decision later. Let's just extend it for 30 days, check it out, and then see what we want to do at that time. That would be my motion.
I would second that. Proper motion and a second to continue case number 2011-00943 for the first meeting in February, time certain. Is that the intent?
Yes.
Agreed.
Have a proper motion and a second further discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Aye.
4-1. Thank you so much. Please stay in touch with Mr. Salmon, he's got some other business to take care of with us right now so that you will understand precisely that this is far more than a cosmetic issue. Thank you for coming. He'll, he'll have to meet with you. Yes, sir, we will always talk.
I've been to the court here before, a couple, you know.
Okay.
I knew that this problem was ongoing.
All right.
But I keep asking that, you know.
All right, we'll get, we will, we will come to some resolution, and we are empathetic, but at the same time, the safety hazards must be a priority for the property owner and homeowner. Thanks again. Item C on the agenda request for abatement, case number 2007-01296211, Mobile Street, Interlaken.
This property, here's the photographs of this property.
That's not your property. We're done with you. This is the next property. But if, maybe you want to buy it.
Property was first seen on October 2nd, 2007, and we found the unsafe mobile home and junk cars and trash and debris on the property. A notice of violation was sent out to the owner on October 2nd, 2007. We had a contract, we had contact with the owner, who wanted the responsibility for the property and thought the county, believed that the county should have to clean it up. A notice of violation was sent out, and the special magistrate heard the case on January 31st, 2008, and found the property in violation. He gave the owner until March 3rd, 2008, to bring the property up to code. The property remained in violation. On August 19th, the special magistrate recommended that the county foreclose, this was 2010, or abate on the property. We did not do that at that time. Staff brought the case back before the special magistrate on September 18th, 2014, and he once again recommended abatement of the property. And that's what we're here to get authorization on.
Thank you so much, Mr. Salmon. Can you help me understand what transpired between August 19th, 2010, and September 18th, 2014?
We had limited funds, and there were other properties that we wanted to abate that were probably in a more populated area that we dealt with. So we have to pick and choose the ones that we do because we have limited funds, even though it's, you, you guys have been generous to us to be able to do that. But we, we have picked and chose in the past to try and deal with the most derelict properties.
Okay, thank you for your counsel. Anyone here representing 211 Mobile Street, Interlaken? Second call. Anyone here representing 211 Mobile Street, Interlaken? Okay, commissioners, you've had the case summary, abatement order, photographs, and a staff recommendation to proceed with abatement of the property. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept staff's recommendation to abate the property, case number 2007-01296.
Second.
Proper motion?
Second.
And a couple of seconds. There, further discussion? Had time to consider? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
The next case is...
Item D, case number 2012-0067-2012-0399, 112 Tiki Court, Palatka.
This, the photographs of this mobile home speak for themselves.
It used to be mobile home.
What mobile home?
Used to be a mobile home.
Yeah.
This picture was taken yesterday, it's actually starting to collapse in. So this property was first seen on February 6th, 2012. And we found the unsafe mobile home that was connected with a meth lab. Notice of viola, unsafe structure was sent out on February 7th.
Is there anyone here for 112 Tiki Court? I don't think they are quite that brave to confess to...
They didn't spend the night there last night.
Commissioners, you have the case summary before you, you have the abatement order, you have the information related to the criminal activity in times past. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move forward with staff recommendations.
Second.
Motion for abatement and a proper second further discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Any none, motion carries. Item E, fine reduction request, case number 2008-0441, Mr. Stephen Cullen, 102 De Soto Drive, Flora Home.
This property was first seen on April 22nd, 2008, and found to be a dilapidated home with trash and debris scattered around the yard. Notice of violation, hearing was sent out to the owner. The special magistrate heard the case on September 18th, 2008. Found the property in violation. He gave the owner until December 1st, 2008, to bring the property into compliance. Did not happen. Ms. Branson, who was the owner at the time, paid the $100 administrative fee, but that's basically all that happened. The property has continued to languish and get worse. And December 10th, 2009, the special magistrate recommended that the county either foreclose or abate the property. There was some discussion until 2012 that the lien on the property with a tax certificate holder, John Stevens, he ended up not doing anything. Basically, nothing happened on the property, and staff took the case before the special magistrate on June 19th, 2014. He once again recommended either foreclosure or abatement. The case went before you on September 9th, 2014. You recommended authorization, you authorized us to abate the property. The property went up for tax deed sale on October 8th, 2014, while we were in the process of getting bids. The new owner, Mr. Steve Cullen, came into the office and requested the staff give him 60 days to either pull permits to make the necessary repairs or demolish the structure. We agreed. Mr. Cullen ended up demolishing the house and cleaning out the property within 30 days. He requested a fine reduction hearing, and it went before the special magistrate on December 18th. Staff had recommended that the $54,125 fine be reduced, $814, and was paid within 60 days. Mr. Cullen spoke before the special magistrate, and he was very appreciative of working with the staff. He indicated that the staff had been great to work with, but he felt circumstances were such that he would like a consideration of a larger reduction of the fine for the following reasons. He purchased a tax deed sale and paid over $7,000 in back taxes on a property that's worth $1,600 appraised by the property appraiser. He paid an additional $2,000 plus to bring the property into compliance, and it saved the county from spending that money to, to abate the property. He brought the property into compliance quickly, and he had absolutely no control of the property prior to the tax deed sale. The special magistrate discussed the issue with me at that time. I agreed with that, that we cannot make an impact on the derelict structures in this county by ourselves. We need the private people to do it. Tax deed sales are, Mr. Cullen's right here.
No, not Mr. Cullen, right.
Just a, something quick. You have to understand that in trying to deal with the abatements that we have and trying to conserve our money, whenever we can get a property owner, a private landowner, to take care of the problem, it's better for us. The tax deed process typically, many times, ends up being the recycling process, if you will, that gets us back on the tax rolls and gets other people, rather than us, to clean the property up. One of the downsides is that if the county is particularly strict on these, and these liens do survive the tax deed sale. If the county's particularly strict on these, anybody who knows what they're doing when they go through the preparation to make a bid would avoid these things like a plague because, you know, you're responsible for that amount, whatever it is, and it could be five, six figures in some cases. So it basically has the adverse effect of keeping people away from that stuff and keep it from being recycled. Okay? So that's why we take an advocate stance on these, is rather than spending county money to fix these properties up and recycle them, it's private money that's getting spent.
Thank you so much for the addendum. This is a case to be applauded. Is Mr. Cullen present? Mr. Cullen, do you have an issue with what's being recommended up here right now? Yes, sir, please do.
I've not yet met that gentleman who just spoke on my behalf, but I certainly appreciate his remarks.
That's the boss.
Okay, I am in favor of the special magistrate's further reduction of the fine.
Okay, if you'll stay tuned at this station, we're gonna pause for station identification. We have a recommendation to concur with the recommendation of the special magistrate and accept the $200 in lieu of the fine. If it's paid within the 30 days, there, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I motion that the special magistrate's instructions in the fine reduction be approved.
We have a proper motion. Do we have a second? Have a second. Further discussion.
Uh, just to thank you, Mr. Cullen, for being a model citizen and less than thirty days is what we want to hear.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Congratulations and thank you for all that you've done. Are you interested in any others? Okay. All right, thank you so much. All right, sounds like a plan. If you can work magic, then continue to do that. Sir, do you need some setup time? Commissioners, can we continue?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we had a time certain and obviously we are hour and fifty-one minutes beyond, uh, that. Thank you, Mr. Brown, for being first up. Mr. Harris is coming right behind you, Ms. Cato. Um, first case is twelve A, PUD fourteen dash double oh one, rezoning map amendment from Ag and PUD to PUD, Magnolia Dunes LLC. I believe that the LLC is represented. If you are to speak, please, uh, come forward, um, and, uh, after this case is presented, just be prepared.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Mike Brown, planning, planning director of Putnam County Planning and Development Services. This application, PUD fourteen dash zero zero one, the applicant's Magnolia Dunes LLC, represented by, uh, Mr. Charles Alfred, to his present. It's a zoning map amendment from planned unit development, uh, and agriculture to planned unit development for approximately a hundred and seven acres in total. The proposed amendment adds three hundred and sixty-five acres, plus or minus, to the existing, uh, hogwaller PUD. Expanding the ATV riding area. Includes additional uses, uh, which includes an airboat racing area, um, fifteen RV hookup campsites, um, eight cottages and sixteen, uh, tent camping sites. Uh, just real quick background, in two thousand eight, the county approved a rezoning of ninety-two plus acres for PUD to allow commercially operated mud bogging facility known as Hogweller Mud Bog. Um, in two oh nine, two thousand nine, the county approved an amendment to that PUD, adding five hundred and forty-nine acres, expanding the ATV riding area, um, including a camping use and bathhouse facility. The future land use is agriculture two. Existing zoning around the, um, the area to, and I apologize, um, staff apologizes, the carryforward of arrows pointing to the, um, area to be, that's under this PUD and proposed for the amendment, um, have turned into As, and we will take care of that in the future, but I, um... But the existing zoning of the area is agriculture. Proposed zoning as, uh, the applicant is PUD. Pursuant to the county's adopted comp plan, under, um, the future land use element, rural recreational uses are permitted in agricultural to land use. And as defined in the comp plan, rural recreational uses... Are, um, hang on a second, let me pull up the staff report. Well, the uses proposed, and just quickly go, the uses proposed meet the definition of rural recreational as defined in, in the comp plan. Uh, the property is, again, is agriculture and boarded by agriculture and conservation. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted comp plan. The, um... Section, the, the land development code provisions that guide the proposed uses will be met. Water, um, and wastewater is provided onsite by the owner via permitted well and septic system. Access to the site is via County Road three-ten, a two-lane, uh, minor collector, adopted level of service D. Um, reviewing the twenty-fourteen traffic counts that the county does, um, along with the proposed development. The, um, level of service on County Road, County Road three-ten will be maintained, will not be exceeded. The development review committee reviewed the proposal at its November nineteenth to fourteen, two thousand fourteen meeting. The planning commission considered the request, um, at its December tenth to fourteen meeting. And planning commission unanimously recommended approval to the amendment. Therefore, recommendation to the board is to amend the county zoning map for one, uh, one thousand seven plus minus acres from planned unit development and agriculture to planned unit development with amended conditions that include provisions for additional uses of an airboat racing area, eight cottages, fifteen RV spaces and sixteen tent camping spaces. Any questions?
This is a public hearing, um, and at this time, uh, we would like to open the public hearing, uh, for the benefit of any individuals who need to speak for or against this project. This is a public hearing. Did you have something to add, Mr.? All right, thank you.
Can I add one thing? The, the next case you will hear is a plat vacation, which is also associated with this. I just wanted to mention that to you.
Okay.
So the plat vacation will follow this.
All right, while the owner is coming forward, I, I do have, uh, one question as it relates to how you're dealing with the traffic during the events. And I know that issue came up, uh, in the meeting and is there a plan? Has Public Works actually had opportunity to come out during the event to see, uh, the effect? Have they been invited out? I guess would be a better question. Uh, and if that has not happened, I'm certainly, uh, recommending that at some time, uh, in the near future, that, that happens so that we will know, uh, from the, uh, engineering, Public Works engineering perspective, what happens during the event itself.
Um, I, I'm not aware that Public Works have, has been out there during an event. Public Works was involved at, at the development review committee. Also, as part of the new site plan with this PUD, the entrance is moving further to the west, uh, to allow more storage off of three-ten. That will hopeful, hopefully address that issue.
But there is, there is no deceleration lane. They're actually on the grass. Correct. Okay, and this, I mean, DOT does have a little something to do with that, correct?
It's actually a county road. It's a county road.
That would be a county road.
Three-ten.
I mean, no, there is not one and that was not it. All I can say is Public Works did not raise that as a concern at the, um, development review committee.
Okay, well, the commissioner is raising it.
We'll get them out there.
Yes, sir. I'm raising it. Um, and I, I certainly want some follow-up on that. Um, ask each of the commissioners, has there been any ex parte communications? If you will start with Commissioner Harris.
No, I have not.
Well, we go all the way back to the Odom subdivision and the creation, which at this point, uh, yes, I'll answer a yes, but I also have comments later.
Okay. None?
Uh, none. None, sir.
Okay, Commissioner.
Um, I, I've been out quite a few times as a guest of Mr. Alfred's and watched him. Um, let me go back in history a little bit. We had a very bad problem when I was first elected, two thousand eight, with illegal mud bogging on private property. And as a commission, uh, for the new commissioner's benefit, we went to the Alfreds that and asked them, they had expressed interest in maybe making an ATV park. And at that time, there were events with well over a thousand people, it would be fair to say, that were participating on private properties, uh, without permission. These people lived somewhere in the union, but out of state mostly, and it was a real problem. So, um, I would just like to point out the fact that the Alfred family, Magnolia Dunes, the corporation stepped up, provided this park, and it was new territory, new ground, uh, that we all had to cross together. We've worked, uh, on it together through this whole thing. You have moved that entrance once now and are proceeding to move it twice again to address the concerns that you have, Commissioner Flag. And, um, I just want to publicly thank you for giving not only Putnam County ATV enthusiasts, but the all of North Florida is now ascending on this property and they are safely carrying out their activity, and I want to thank you for doing that.
Could I add something?
Just before, uh, Commissioner Harris, so have you been mud bogging?
No, sir. I do, well, I can't say that. I rattles, uh, Mr. Alfred's cart with him. He points out, he showed me the airboat park, it's very nice. Uh, the ESPN people will be there to film future events. It's very good tourism for our, uh, our county. And, but no, sir, I have not, I'm not attracted to going into the mud pit.
All right, we'll close testimony at this time. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say, I have never had private conversation with Skeet about this, but I was aware of the need in the county, and I remember we were very appreciative of them stepping up and providing a place for people to enjoy the sport and not be out on private property and having her, hordes of people come in and say, "Our lake is getting ruined," or, you know.
It's always a blessing when we can legalize some things there and, uh, and also the liability is, is, is great. And so it's commendable, um, for, again, the LLC to, um, to take on a project of this magnitude. We're going to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Alfred, uh, by moving that gate more to the west, that's going to allow more people to come into your property off three-ten, so you should be able to move a lot more people.
Correct. We can store a lot more cars that were on the highway before.
Right.
I know our last event, we had a lot, lot, lot less. It, it gives us a lot more storage room.
Right, because you have that whole feel right there, the crocker problem.
Yes.
You know, again, we have to, to be preemptive in thinking safe. And it's just, uh, 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 just like having a good insurance policy. You don't want to, you want to use it, uh, but, uh, you, you got to have it. And so I just think that Public Works can weigh in on it while an activity is going on and that'll give all peace of mind so that we don't have to do any follow-through. This time, public hearing is closed. Any more commissioner deliberations? Hearing none, entertain a motion to, uh, accept or reject the recommended action.
I move approval for accepting.
We have a proper motion and a second. Further discussion. District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District five?
Yes.
District three? Yes. Shunamus, thank you so much. All right, the next case that has relativity is PV dash fourteen dash double oh two, vacation of recorded plat for Kennelworth subdivision, again, Magnolia Dunes LLC.
Again, it's, uh, same, same area, same project. Vacating, partial vacation of plat with roads of the Kennelworth subdivision, primarily the western half of it. Quick background, Kennelworth subdivision was a plat of record, uh, in December nineteen-eleven. There was a vesting case, oh-six-ten resulted in the vesting of property within the Kennelworth subdivision owned by the Odom family with certain conditions. Lots not owned by the Odom family were not vested, therefore not eligible for development. Magnolia Dunes has acquired all the lots in the Kennelworth subdivision firmly owned by Odom, plus some additional lots that, that they've picked up over time. In two thousand nine, the county vacated the eastern half of the Kennelworth subdivision, associated with that PUD. Plat vacation criteria are, um, set forth in the land development code, section twelve, oh-eight, fourteen. The, um, the big thing is, is the, the county, um, has identified one of the, in the comp plan, one of the big issues is, is old subdivisions, antiquated subdivisions, the number of, of excess lots, which fall, far exceeds the need of the county. The vacation of this, uh, partial vacation of this, um, subdivision meets that criteria, um, address, it's consistent with the land use designation of Ag Two at the comprehensive plan. Also, those individual, the lots that are owned by other individuals, um, not associated with Magnolia Dunes, they still have, um, those lots are still available and we are not vacating the road, so there's still on paper access to those lots. I've received a number of calls from around the country, um, from people who have, through, um, inheriting a number of lots, um, that are out there. And, um, and also some local citizens who have lots, they've in, indicated a concern for that and asked the question, but they still have the same access, the same rights as they had previously to this. The vacation of, of the Magnolia Dunes portion has no effect on, on their property. Again, this shows a picture of, of the area to be vacated. The vacation of the, of the lot, of the western half of the Kennelworth subdivision meets the plat vacation criteria set forth in twelve eighteen fourteen of the land development code. Taxes on the property are current. The crest is, request has been appropriate advertising in conformance with Florida statutes. Therefore, staff is requesting to vacate the portion, approval to vacate the portion of the plat alleys and roads of the Kennelworth subdivision, as stated in the attached resolution, and return the property to acreage. And that is consistent with, it's also, that would also be consistent with the proposed plan of development, the PUD that you just approved.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Brown. This is a public hearing. We do, again, open the public hearing concerning the vacation of the recorded plat and the roads proportion of Kennelworth subdivision. Are there any individuals here to speak concerning the vacation of this recorded plat? Seeing no movement, we will close the public hearing. Commissioner, deliberations?
Um, I have a question, if I could, Mr. Chair, for Mr. Alfred, or really, Mr. Brown. The subdivision that we created in two thousand and eight for the Odom family, um, what does it do to that? I mean, it wasn't really clear in here.
It basically takes, it takes that away.
Okay, so the antiquated lots, as well as the newer approved subdivision to our new land development codes are all done away with and we go back to the original Ag status, or an Ag status.
Uh, well, it, it vacates the lot lines and the roads, except for what we've left for access to the various individual lots that are not owned by Mr.
I understand that part, yeah.
The zoning will essentially be PUD. It's going to roll into his PUD.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good, that's all I have.
Counsel?
Yeah, we need to make our ex parte disclosures.
All right, sir.
That was my signal.
Any ex parte communication?
I've had none.
I've had none with the new owners.
None?
None.
None.
It's a pleasure of the commission, uh, as it relates to the staff recommendation for approval of the request to vacate.
Move approval.
Proper motion.
Second.
Proper second. Further discussion. Had time to consider, district one?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
District three?
Aye.
Adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you again, so, very much. Okay, item C, PUD fourteen dash double oh two, planned unit development amendment, Skinner Nurseries, and Mr. Harris. Burns. Cato.
Good afternoon. Uh, Harris Burns Cato, Planning Development Services.
Good afternoon. Told everybody else good morning, but we're saying good afternoon.
I looked at my watch before I came up here. I had plans on saying good morning, though. Uh, the applicant is Midnight Florida LLC. The agent is, uh, Jay Pinnergast. Uh, the PUD is comprised of a thousand ninety-six acres along the shores of Creston Lake. The PUD amendment is to convert eight-point-three acres of nursery to education. The education facility would be a private K through three, uh, school for children whose families live and work, live or work on the farm. The, uh, the curriculum will be based on the Reggio Emilia education principles, which is similar to Montessori. This allows for the children to learn at their own pace. The building is three thousand six hundred and eighty, uh, eighty-one square feet with a maximum occupancy of sixty-seven. However, the actual number of students is estimated to be around twelve. The building will include solar power, uh, as well as... as well as a well, cistern, harvest, reuse, rainwater. In the future, additional private education facilities may be proposed within the same 8.3 acres. These potential education facilities would be ancillary education buildings and will be submitted for permit review at the appropriate time. The Development Review Committee conducted a preliminary review of the proposed education facilities on November 19, 2014. The DRC unanimously approved the, the project. The applicant has submitted final plans for review. The Planning Commission recommends approval of the proposed PUD amendment for Putnam County. The Plan Commission requested that the, that condition one be limited to signs and signals only and omit the road requirements within that condition. Staff recommends conditional approval of the requested PUD amendment. This amendment is a minor adjustment to the current PUD affecting 1,096 acres. The proposed development is consistent with the Land Development, uh, Co, Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan. If you, I was going to save you from reading the conditions off, if you, if you all would like. And then, uh, here's an aerial of the whole PUD. The area that's going to be designated for education facilities is circled in red. And here is a close-up of that area. Here is the original site plan, and then if you look over in the lower right-hand corner, you could see where the purple has been added. That's where the education facility is going to go. And with that, I'll open up for questions.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. Burns, Kato. Uh, this is a public hearing. Do we have any citizens?
I do have one question.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Your first condition of approval, it, it says that in the education area, that they would be responsible for signs and signals, but not road improvements. Is that because it sits on a paved road and there weren't, won't be any roads?
Well, my, my, my conditions that are in the staff report do, do state sign, signals, and road improvements as, as part of the conditions. I'll read condition one, just for the record. The owner of the PUD is financially responsible for all traffic impacts related to the existence, operation of, of the proposed and future education, education facilities. That is, sign, signals, road education, or road improvements, et cetera. Uh, and that was to give Public Works in the future, you know, the, the potential is that this site could be further developed with ancillary buildings. And if that were to impact, and they need to put a, a turn lane or something of that, that would give Public Works the wiggle room to be able to mandate that improvement. Or at least, that's my intention.
Okay, I thought that I read something when I was studying it last night, that that part about the road improvements was scratched off, but...
Well, the Planning Commission advised this board to take out the road improvements aspect of it.
Okay. And so the recommendation comes forward with that back in it?
Recommendation for the Planning Commission is not to include it, but recommendation of staff is to include it.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lavoie?
Um, yes, um, just for future information, because I think we're going to see more of this. And the use of a cistern, does the Department of Environmental Health monitor the quality of water for the schoolchildren? That's the only thing here that really sparked my interest.
I'm, I'm not sure, I couldn't answer that. I would have to, we would have to consult with Department of Health for that.
Okay.
Did that mean it was an addition to, I, I imagine the applicants would know they have water all over the place with the nurseries, so, okay.
Would the applicant like, like to step forward? Jay? Tom?
Good afternoon. Uh, good afternoon. I'm Jay Pendergast. I'm the architect for the project. And I'm here with Mr. Tom Stevens.
Tom Stevens, I'm the registered agent and general manager.
And, and the cistern is going to be used to collect rainwater. And, uh, once we collect it, it's going to be used for landscape and irrigation. It's not going to be used as a potable water for the children in the school.
Well, it reads that way.
I mean, you know, you'd have to, you, you could do that, but it would, it would require, uh, you know, really extensive systems. So our, our, our main concern is to capture the water and reuse it in the agricultural area.
Very good, yeah.
Commissioner Harvey?
I have nothing.
Anyone else from the public have any comments or concerns? Close the public hearing part of the meeting. Any ex parte communications, District one?
I've had none.
None?
District three, none. Four?
None. None.
Okay, what is the, um, the discussion? Again, we have a Planning Commission recommendation, and we have a staff recommendation. Let's clarify precisely the advantage of the staff recommendation over the conditions that the Planning Commission, if you just zoom in on that. One second, sir.
Yeah, as I said before, um, as, as the site, obviously, we have a building currently that is street, is, is a said size of 3,681 square feet. There is the potential for more, more buildings, more students. And we don't have a limitation on the students that will be able to go to the facility. But one way to, you know, and, and the, the road out there is, is a two-lane road. Right now, the capacity of the road, you know, falls well below LOS, so, you know, we're, we're fine on that aspect of it. But in the future, it's, it's more of a contingency of, you know, if, if this were to expand and, and, uh, you know, growth in the county, whatever. We need to add a turn lane, something of that nature. It gives Public Works the ability to come back and revisit at that point and, and say, we need, we need a turn lane or some kind of road improvement to safely operate traffic out in that area.
Okay, I think the, the main key that I'm, I guess, getting from the Planning Commission in that recommendation number one, are you're making the owner responsible for that? Versus, is, is that what the Planning Commission was trying to say, that they're not against it, but they didn't want the owner to be responsible, or did they think it was just totally unnecessary in their deliberations?
Well, I, I can't speak for the Planning Commission's intent. We, there really wasn't that, that much discussion. They were just kind, they were against, I, I think they were worried about unintended consequences if I were to, uh, look into what it is that they were thinking, but that maybe the Public Works Department would abuse their power or, or, or setting the owners on the hook. I'm not sure exactly what it is that their aversion to the, uh, uh, condition was.
So under the Plan Unit Development Regulations, uh, this traffic impact is a normal, uh, a, a component in, in a PUD?
Well, there is, there is a, a section in there that is dedicated towards traffic. The majority of that, that was there in this particular PUD and the development agreement previous was directed towards internal traffic. That is, all the internal development and, and roads that supplemented that, that use. And this is towards the county road. And, and primarily just, the, of course, and just to go back on what my intention was, my intention was the, the road improvement for, you know, direct educational use of, like, something that was a turn lane or something of that aspect, not necessarily, you know, fore-laning the road and them being on the hook for the whole thing. However, I can understand the, uh, uh, concern that it might be, it could be interpreted that way in 10, 15, 20 years.
Any objections from the?
Well, I, I would like to add that part of this PUD amendment limits our, um, we have 7,000 square feet in there that can be built for educational facilities. We're using a 3,600. So, um, our ability to grow is actually pretty limited within what we're requesting today with this PUD amendment. I think that's why there was some objection to, you know, I, there's just not going to be a lot of traffic, you know, on that road.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Commissioner Harris.
Okay. So, um, the, the more traffic that's produced in this PUD is at the northern part where the RV and the airstrip is, is that?
It's, it's actually the southern part.
The what?
We're, we're on the southern edge of the PUD.
I know that, for this part.
Yes.
And the main entrance to the part at the north is off of Highway 17?
Under, under the proposed PUD, it would be next to that Baptist church that, that's out there. That would, where the commercial area would be. There probably also will be an entrance off of Clifton Road where the, we call it the, the second entrance, the eastern entrance of the, where the Skinner's was.
I guess my point is that the road at the school that we're looking at right now, that is not the primary entrance and probably would not be used to go up to the part where more traffic would be.
No, it, well, it'll be south of the current, it'll be east of the current entrance, and there'll be an, an entrance and an exit point right there. It's kind of like, I live down the road, and last year I passed two cars on my way to work, so.
It's a pleasure of the commission.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we, um, approve this change in the PUD and that we, um, leave the part out about the road improvements. I think it's, it's too confusing, and I don't think it's necessary with the small scope.
So clarification of the motion is that you are going with the Planning Commission's recommendation that, uh, causes condition one to be limited to signs and signals, is that?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. We have a proper motion.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Second. Further discussion? Are there any ex parte communications, District one?
No.
District two?
None.
Three, nine. Four?
Nine.
Five?
None.
Okay. Ready to vote? We have a proper motion and a second. District one, what is your vote?
Aye.
District two?
Aye.
District four?
Aye.
District five?
Aye.
District three, aye. Unanimous. Thank you. County Administrator?
Under appointments, Mr. Chairman, I, I would note that we have received an email from the, uh, representative of the city of Palaca indicating that that body has endorsed the appointment of Vernon Myers as the, uh, representative of Palaca to the Northeast Florida Regional Council.
Entertainer motion to confirm appointment of Vernon Myers as the Northeast Florida Regional Council Representative?
So moved. Mr. Chairman?
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Any other appointments for Affordable Housing Advisory, Better Place Plan Oversight, CDB, CDBG Citizens Advisory Task Force?
I do.
Okay, District, uh, District one?
All right. For the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, I would like to nominate Tammy Ridenhour to sit on that.
Repeat that name once more?
Tammy Ridenhour.
Okay.
She, uh, lives in Lake Como, so she's definitely in my district. She's in the banking business, and she would be familiar with this type thing, would be a good person.
Super. Do you have any other?
Yes, I have another one. Uh, on the Better Place Plan Oversight Committee, District one, Dudley Sargent's been doing that for a number of years, and he wants to step down, and I would like to nominate Bill Pickens to fill that position.
You have any others? Is that it, District one?
That's it.
District two, do you have any?
None, at this time.
District four, do you have any?
I do not.
District five, do you have any?
Working on it.
Okay, entertain a motion to appoint Tammy Ridenhour to District one.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
For Housing and Bill Pickens to District one Better Place. We have a proper motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, um, moving to item 14, County Attorney Rest Council Berry Jail Project Bond Anticipation Note Resolution.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, the board has previously approved the, uh, RD financing for the jail project, and has also approved the interim financing with Sun Trust. This resolution is just a formal document by which the interim financing with Sun Trust will be accomplished. If there's no questions, I'm looking for, this is, we think in final form, they, there may be some slight modifications. It won't be anything substantive. I'm looking for a motion to adopt this resolution as presented with such changes thereto as the chairman, in consultation with the county administrator, deems necessary or appropriate.
So moved.
Second.
I was just going to say, and a motion you shall get.
All right, we have a proper motion and a second concerning the interim financing proposal from Sun Trust Bank off of the jail project. Discussion. Voting on a resolution authorized the issue of a bond anticipation note. At time to consider, ready to vote?
Ready.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Anything else, counsel? Yes, sir. District one, anything else?
No.
District two, anything else?
Have nothing else.
District four, anything else?
I have nothing, sir.
District five, anything else?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, are you and I headed to Gainesville at the end of the week?
We have advanced county commission training, so we can learn how to conduct ourselves. Yes, part two for you.
Part two for me.
Okay.
Chairman, I'll be there, too.
Well, yes, you will.
Yes, I will.
Clerk of the Court, Tim Smith, do you have any more lessons for us?
Uh, no, sir. Mr. Chairman, we have no other items.
It is lunchtime.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, Jones, all is well. Let's be mindful of the issues that have been brought to the forefront. I encourage each of you, let's not react and needlessly stir things. We know who we are, and we know where we're going, and so please be mindful of that, and, um, the best is yet to come. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to, to thank Mr. Quinn from the Jacksonville Chamber for coming here today and trying to bring some resolve, and we look forward to future discussions. And I hope you can take back our concerns with this issue. It's, uh, it's, uh, very serious.
Okay. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.